Good evening. Today is January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Fulton Planning Commission. This is an eight-member commission appointed by the South Fulton City Council and Mayor to make recommendations on applications for rezoning, special use permit, and other planning and zoning-related matters. I am the chair of the Planning Commission, and I am joined today by Giovanni Vickers in District One, Keith Perry in District Two, Reverend Shannon Jones in District Three, Greg Bailey in District Five, Paulette Devon in District Six, and Yvonne Boone in District Seven. Members of staff present tonight are CDRA Director Reginald McLendon, Victoria Young, Matthew Williams, Adriana Equals, Barrett Alexander, Alani Joseph, and Karen Tominey. The applications will be heard in the order listed on the printed agenda. The applications will be allowed a total of ten minutes to present their case. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicants, to convince the board that the application should be approved, they may choose to reserve some of the time for rebuttal following an opponent's presentation. Any individuals in opposition will have a total of ten minutes to present their position. If multiple people will speak in opposition, you should organize yourselves so as to allow everyone to speak. Let me just reiterate that because it comes up a lot. If you are against something and you have a group of people, make sure that you give everyone time to speak. It is ten minutes for the whole group. Opposition is not permitted rebuttal time. If you wish to address the commission on a case, you must fill out a comment card and indicate whether you are a proponent or an opponent to a case. If you are not sure whether or not you are a proponent or an opponent, you must fill out an opponent comment card. The commission will take two votes on each application. The first vote is on the findings of fact as presented by the staff. The second vote is for approval, denial, or deferral of the application. It is the second vote that determines the board's recommendation to the city council. These same matters will be heard by the city council at a public hearing on February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Please refrain from any verbal outbursts during the public hearing, and please only address the commission during the designated public comment time. And I will add that there are community meetings, and they are so important, and we want everyone to have their voices heard, but this is not a community meeting, and we have to run it like a legal proceeding. So if you feel like you are not being heard because it is not time for the community to speak, it's not because we don't want to hear you, it's because we actually have to follow very specific things. It's a legal proceeding. Okay, thank you. Do we have minutes to look over before I begin?
Three seconds.
They're there. Okay, cool. For how many?
Four.
Four months. Okay.
Before we do the minutes, we have to do roll call?
Yeah, no, no. I was just checking because every time I get to that part, I tell everyone to look at minutes that don't exist. Yeah, okay, cool. Um, okay. Staff, do you please call the roll?
All right, Commissioner Smith-Vickers. Commissioner Perry.
Here.
Commissioner Reverend Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Devon.
Here.
Commissioner Boone.
Sorry, y'all, I'm gonna take a minute. It's gonna take me a minute to get used to this new microphone. Um, okay. We'll now move on to the approval of minutes for the past four months. Commissioners, did you have a chance to review them? Everyone had a chance to review them?
Yes.
Okay. We'll now, I'll now entertain a motion on the approval of minutes for the past four meetings.
Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. Uh, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Smith-Vickers.
Not voting tonight.
Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Bailey.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Boone.
I was reservations. Can I just bring up one thing? I have no way of knowing whether the attendance is correct.
You can, you can say nay. Okay. I was conditioned. Okay. Okay, moving on to, I guess, department updates. So I'll pass that off to Director McLendon.
All right, thank you. Reginald McLendon, Managing Director of Community Development and Regulatory Affairs for the City of South Fulton. This is not a normal part of our agenda, but I do thank the Planning Commission for indulging me for our first meeting of two thousand and twenty-five, for bringing some quick updates. I thought it important for a few different reasons. Number one, just to say Happy New Year to everybody. Welcome you to our newly renovated facility here at fifty-four forty Fulton Industrial Boulevard. We are back in our City Hall after being absent from here for about a year. Those of you who were off, have been on the board will remember that we used to meet back in our break room area, but we're now here in this newly renovated space. It has some new technology for us to use, the microphones. I think they've explained to you how to use those. We have two cameras. There's one in the back, one in the front. So what the people at home should be seeing is there's a view of whoever's speaking here at the podium, and there's also a wide shot of the board, so they should be able to see all of you. And then there are two, there's a monitor that you all can see, hopefully, behind you. If you, if you all can't see it, I'm sorry, in front of you, to the, to the commissioners. And then there's a monitor that the members of the audience can see that is behind you, and I think it should be displaying the same thing. And so that's the technology that we will be using. I want to thank you to our cultural affairs team, our audiovisual team who's here with us, Harold and Ryan, who are, who are running our meeting, and they will be here with us for all of our Planning Commission meetings. And so it should be a very professional product that we are, are beginning to put out for our Planning Commission meetings. It's one of the things that we've heard in the past, that it was, that it's been hard to see and hear our meetings when they go out on YouTube because we've been kind of, it's been a bit of an amateur production with us just kind of filming it on the, on the iPad, but we've done the best we can, especially with us not having a permanent facility over the past year. I want to start by welcoming two new board members that we have today. District One, we have a new appointee, Ms. Giovanni Smith-Vickers. In District Five, we have a new appointee, Mr. Greg Bailey. They have both been sworn in. Ms. Smith-Vickers has been sworn in, but she will, she will not be voting tonight. She will be participating in the meeting, but our city council has passed a requirement that all, in order to serve on the board, you must certify that you have taken and passed some Robert's Rules of Order training, and she hadn't quite had time to do that yet. So until she certifies that, we're gonna ask her to refrain from voting tonight. But at our February meeting, she will be a full participant, and we look forward to wonderful things from her. And I'll ask if we could wait to the end of the meeting, if either one of you want to make some, any opening remarks. I will give you time to do that. Let me quickly say this. We have, it looks like, standing room only here in our, our meeting room already. Out front, our meeting is being transmitted. There's a TV out there where you can watch the meeting on YouTube. There's some additional overflow seating, so if you need to sit down until your case comes up that you want to come in on, you can go sit and watch the meeting outside and then come in when it's time for you to, to comment. And we would appreciate you allowing, of course, any of our elderly citizens to have your seat if you are able to stand. I do want to quickly state that the planning and zoning team under our CDRA department as of this Monday is completely staffed up. It has, that has never been the case, at least since I've been employed here at the City of South Fulton, but we, every position that we have is filled. You all have been seeing the same employees on our planning and zoning team for a while now, which is, I know that's probably been a little bit of a surprise to you, but we, we are building a very stable team here. They are all professionals. They are professional planners. Our latest addition is Ms. Alexia Wilson. She comes to us formerly in the planning departments of Rockdale County and Gwinnett County. She has a degree from Kennesaw State University, so we look forward to great things from her. I want to talk briefly about training. You all will be receiving an email very soon, probably tomorrow, about some training that we are going to offer for all of our boards and commissions and our city council as well as employees. Here at the City of South Fulton, the Carl Vincent Institute of Government is gonna come down and do some series of trainings for us. We are going to ask you all to attend those trainings. They're gonna be specifically in the planning and zoning area. Some of you have already received some of this training, but this, this training is going to be specifically tailored to our community, so we're gonna ask you to come back and do it again. And more training is always helpful. Members of our staff are gonna be there, so we're all gonna learn together as we grow in two thousand and twenty-five. So you'll be receiving that email probably tomorrow. We're looking at doing three days, actually, of training at the, I believe, at the end of February, beginning of March in that area. And I'm gonna close out by saying this. This is a, our motto here at City, City of South Fulton is that we are a city on the rise. I think that we all can see that from our facility that we have here, that we have renovated. If you all, next door, you saw our new council chamber that was utilized last night. Very beautiful renovations there. This, this room is, is also newly renovated. It's a little bit small, but we are, but, but it's nice and, and hope, and it won't be as packed out for most of our meetings. Tonight is a little bit of a heavy agenda. But we are a city of, on the rise. We have a lot of growth coming, which is why we have a lot of people here. Two thousand and twenty-five, we're going to see quite a few of our planning efforts come to fruition. We have our housing assessment coming down the pike. We have an impact fee study coming. We're gonna become a member of the Metro Atlanta Land Bank. We're gonna be the first city, the first government outside of the City of Atlanta and Fulton County to be a new member of that group. And so we're growing as a city. I told our staff that this is our year of growing up, and we're gonna do that, and we're, and we're all gonna grow together as board members, as staff, and as citizens. And as part of that growth effort, we are going to conduct these meetings professionally. We're gonna ask our citizens to, to act professionally and to respect our meetings and to respect our board members. This particular meeting space is very small, and that means a couple of things. One, that means that we're sitting very close to our board members, and what that might invite is the feeling that you're supposed to have a conversation with our board members. That is not the case. This is their meeting. They're supposed to be talking. The person standing here at the podium is supposed to be speaking. If you're not a board member or if you're not standing at this podium, we're gonna ask you not to speak. If you need to have a conversation with someone in this room, we're gonna ask you to step outside and have that conversation because if you are gonna have a conversation, it's very likely that you are going to be disrupting our meeting. If you cannot respect those requests, we are going to ask that you be removed from this meeting. We will be have, we will have security here, and we are not gonna allow people to disrupt our planning commission meetings. We're not gonna allow people to disrespect our staff members. And so if you need to speak to a staff member who's in this room, we're gonna ask that you wait until after that, after the meeting is over with, or you try to reach out to us later on in the week, and we'll get back to you. So with that being said, we appreciate you. If members, I'll ask, we, we have some very important items to get to, so I'll ask if you all have anything for me to, unless it's extremely important to wait after, after the meeting, or at least until after the agenda items, because I really want us to get to our comprehensive plan, because that's really probably the most important thing that we're gonna do in two thousand and twenty-five. So with that being said, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we will now move on to the five-year comprehensive plan update. And I'm guessing staff. Hello. Good, how are you?
Green is on. Good to go. So, good evening. Name is Randy Gibbs. Happy New Year, and congratulations on a lovely space. I'm here today on behalf of the Sizmore Group to inform the Planning Commission of the comp plan that is now underway. And so, and so, so your microphone, I think.
We're all, we're all getting used to the mic.
Understand. I understand. I'm happy to be here for it. So, next slide, please. Okay. All right. So Randy Gibbs, again, with the Sizmore Group. Our firm does architecture, urban planning, interiors, and community engagement. And I'm learning with you. You got it? All right, appreciate it. And so our group is, is leading, we're running the project, we're managing the project for the City of South Fulton. We're excited about that. Of course, we're not doing it on our own. We are working with Kim Lee Horn and Sycamore Consulting. They're doing the marketing, housing assessment, as well as doing the community engagement. But we have some fantastic points of contact with the City of South Fulton, one being the aforementioned Reginald, and then Ms. Carmen Davis. They've been our chief points of contact with your fair city. Next slide, please. All right. So essentially, I'm gonna give a brief overview of the comp plan process, understanding that we have two new commissioners. Just felt like it would just give you a brief overview as to why this is important. As Reggie mentioned, we'll talk about the various elements within the comp plan, the major deliverables of the comp plan itself, and then how we're gonna go about engaging the citizens of the City of South Fulton as we build this plan. Next slide, please. So this is a requirement for the state of Georgia in order for your city to maintain its qualified local government status. And so that, maintaining that status allows the City of South Fulton to be eligible for various federal grants and, and other types of incentives that come through the Atlanta Regional Commission, the state of Georgia, and, and the federal government. So maintaining that status is very important. Fortunately for the City of South Fulton, a city on the rise, you are a year in advance before your five-year update, right? So the, the previous comp plan was completed in two thousand and twenty-one. Every five years, it needs to be updated, and so you're doing this a year in advance of that, so, and for good reason, because this is a fairly new city. And so with it being a fairly new city, having to go through future land use changes or variances and things of that nature because of your zoning or, or your land use becomes a hassle and becomes a burdensome. So taking an opportunity to reevaluate your comp plan, reevaluate the future land uses that were previously established by Fulton County makes a lot of sense for a brand-new city, to make sure that your vision is on paper and that you're working towards it with your future land use. And so kudos to, to you and your government for taking this initiative. But doing this is, is also a requirement for the state of Georgia, Department of Community Affairs, to maintain that qualified local government status so that you can get all the benefits there for you. Next slide, please. This document is, is, it's an official, it's a policy document, so just as if you have, just as you are executing legal procedures right now, this is a legal document, and it tells you what the future land use for each and every parcel within your city, how it is intended to be used. And so we, we also are, it's a comprehensive document, and so there are transportation plans, there are park plans, there are trail plans, there are economic development plans. A comprehensive development plan puts all those together essentially to say, hey, this is the singular document that tells us how we're trying to move forward. And so it addresses things like land use, economic development, transportation, housing, economic, and environmental conditions as well. And so this is a very, it's very much a legal document requirement by the state of Georgia. Next slide, please. All right. And so what it provides is a singular document and a document that contains the vision and the goals for your city, right? The vision and your goals for your city. And so that's what we're getting after in the deliverables of this comp plan is a future land use map, so we're gonna update this map. And we're also gonna provide you with a report of accomplishments, which is what I like to call the report card for your city over the past five years. The two thousand and twenty-one comp plan had a community work program list. We are gonna assess the city or have, take an assessment of the city to say, hey, with respect to your previous community work program items, how did you do? Did you complete it? So on and so forth. So that's part of the comp plan, it's a, it's a report of accomplishments, and then we're gonna create a new community work program so that we can align the actions of the vision, align actions to the vision for the new comp plan. And so you're gonna get in this document a new, a restated vision, a restated list of goals, a restated list of values. They could be the same as your two thousand and twenty-one, they could be brand-new, but that's something that we'll work through with the community and, and your leadership. And then we'll also get a new community work program spreadsheet, and I'll show you an example of that in, in the slides to come, to state, these are the actions that we'll take over a five-year period to get to our twenty-year vision, twenty-year goal. Next slide, please. All right. There are several users of the comp plan. Mayor and city council, they use this as a guide to make decisions. So does city staff. They review the comp plan, they review the future land use element of the comp plan to ensure that as people come forward with new developments, with new proposals, that it aligns with that document. So it's very much a guiding document for the city. Next slide, please. Community members use it so that they know where the city is trying to go. They know what the vision of the city is, what the values are, and in those areas within the city that are geared towards development or geared towards preservation, so on and so forth. So this is very much a helpful document for community residents as well. And the agency partners, if they want to work with the City of South Fulton, they know these locations where certain activities are intended, right? And so that's where partnership and agencies, their roles and their value of the, of the comp plan exists. Next slide, please. And then your final deliverables. Again, you're gonna get a report of accomplishments, which again is, is like a, a report card for the previous comp plan. You'll get a brand-new future land use map. And in this particular version of the comp plan, what we're gonna do is we're gonna go by parcel, parcel by parcel, to identify the future land use. Sometimes we, we take swaths, sometimes there are designated areas, but for our case, we're gonna work with your city council members, we're also gonna work with staff to not only identify, to identify the appropriate future land uses for each parcel, and then we're also looking at the adjacencies, particularly with the adjacent municipalities, because sometimes you have an industrial use in an adjacent city that doesn't necessarily marry up with a residential use within the city of South Fulton and vice versa. And so that's the reason, it's part of the reason why we're taking a parcel-by-parcell approach to this. So you're gonna get a brand-new future land use map. You'll have a community work program, so it's a brand-new report card over the course of the next five years, and the implementation matrix. And so this is an example. This Excel product is an example of what the implementation matrix looks like. It'll tell you what the project is. You'll also get a sense as to what the goals are and how it aligns with various goals, and so we'll, we'll get a little bit detailed. You'll have a sense as to when the city should be approaching or addressing these items, these actions within the CWP, and then the responsible parties and the estimated cost. Those are, the estimated cost in particular is a high-level cost, but what it does do is it gives the city, gives the staff, to say, okay, well, based off the community work program items, we are intending on putting this in our budget in year three, right? And so this is a document that feeds other governmental documents as well. Next slide, please. Oh, okay. So there are some required elements within the comp plan. I talked about community goals and visions, the needs and opportunity assessment, community work program items, broadband services, that's real, that's a government, this is required by the state of Georgia. Broadband services is really for rural areas, but we'll take a look at that as well. There's the capital improvements and then the land use element. Next slide. Transportation and housing. And so Reggie already mentioned that there was a housing assessment that's ongoing, and so what we'll do is we'll, we'll piggyback off of that effort to, to inform this particular plan. Next slide. Again, a vision statement, a list of community goals. We'll insert some community policies based off of things that we've heard. Some things might be working, some things may not, some things may need to be, be adjusted, some things might need to be eliminated, but we'll evaluate various policies as well and then define different character areas, because the City of South Fulton's geography is a little disparate. It's, it's a little diverse, right? And so not everything needs to be treated as the same, right? And so that's something that we're taking into account as we build out this plan. Next slide, please. Report of accomplishments, we talked about that. The grade is gonna be, these activities from the previous comp plan, they're either underway, they're either completed, postponed, or canceled, and so those are the, the grades, the marks, if you will. The state of Georgia is really interested in, in ensuring that every element from the previous comp plan gets addressed, and so we'll say what needs to be said, and then if a further explanation is needed, we'll provide it. Next slide, please. First of all, let me back up. Y'all take a lot of pictures in the City of South Fulton, and your picture game is fantastic. So the fact that we just had Stonemageddon Park for whatever, and y'all have pictures of it impressed me, but I digress. These are some other elements that we could, that we could look through and consider as we build out the comp plan. We'll work with Ms. Davis and Reggie and the rest of your team if there are other aspects that need to be addressed from a broad perspective, something like education or green space, disaster, weather, you know, those are, those, we could do a deep dive into those, or perhaps we say, okay, well, this is an initial examination, but a further, more thorough plan might be needed. So just an example of optional planning elements that could be added into this comp plan.
Question, what we, we?
Yes, ma'am.
Under the human services, at what length are they included in a comp plan?
I don't understand your question, ma'am.
Okay. When you say human services, there are all sorts of human services.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Like seniors follow.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Health follow the human services.
Yes, ma'am.
Housing follow the human services. So that's what, what I'm getting at.
Oh, so you're asking to what, how deep do we go into human services?
Right.
Um, I don't know how far we'll go in this particular plan, okay? So if that is something that you think needs to be addressed in our comp plan? No, not at all?
Not at all. Um, okay, I mean.
Sorry about the microphone. I'm being told that we need to move along with the meeting, and we can't have a conversation right now. Is that correct? Okay.
And I would just add that this is a public hearing, so if you hold your questions and comments till the end of this presentation, the public will be allowed a time to speak, but we just don't allow questions being asked during the presentation. You will have your time at the conclusion of the presentation.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay.
All right. Okay, thank you, thank you. Next slide, please. So this is your current future land use map. One point that So this is your current future land use map. Um, one point that I want to hit here is that this is a, um, citywide plan. Okay? And so we're going to go through every district that, that's part of our community engagement. We're going to try to make sure we talk and make ourselves, make ourselves accessible to every community. Um, but if you live in District One, you have just as much invested interest in the properties in District Six and District Seven. So this is a citywide plan. And when I show you the dates and the locations, just know that everyone from the city, every stakeholder from the city is welcome to all the meetings, okay? This is a citywide plan, but again, we're going parcel by parcel and we'll, um, yes. Next slide, please. This meeting in particular is, is vital to the process. I have your microphone. Um, this meeting in particular is vital to the process, uh, because it, the, the state of Georgia requires that we make an announcement to the public, uh, to the planning commission that this, um, exercise is, is, has commenced. And so this is the kickoff of it. And then we'll go to, um, Mayor and City Council, uh, later this month. And then after we go through the work of building the plan, we'll come back, uh, to this body, uh, to get your, your, um, your vote of approval or recommendation, uh, for adoption. So this is an official part of the process. Next slide, please. All right. I'm gonna go through this real fast. Um, we're gonna, part of the, the building of the plan requires an existing conditions assessment. And so again, these are the elements that we're working through and then we're evaluating the progress, um, from your previous plan. We're also looking at other, uh, planning efforts that have, have taken place over the last five years. All right. Next slide, please. Uh, we'll engage the community, uh, in, in many, many, uh, uh, meetings. There's going to be an online opportunity as well. And so we really want to hear from the community with respect to your needs, the opportunities, challenges, your vision, goals, aspirations, um, from everybody within the community. Um, and so we'll talk a little bit more about that, but, but that's another part, uh, capturing the goals and needs and opportunities. We'll develop the community work program, which again, the, the, uh, the report card, and we'll go over the future land use parcel by parcel. Next slide, please. Um, these are more steps within, or more tasks within, uh, the plan itself. Next slide. And then the out, the engagement. This is big. Just want to make sure that everyone knows, um, the steps that we're taking in order to, to meet with community and, and, and engage with your staff. Uh, we'll be having, uh, several team meetings with, uh, Ms. Carmen and her team. Uh, and then we'll be going to, yeah, well, I got, I got a best slide for that. And then the final deliverable will be, uh, a printed document. This is your previous comp plan. And so it's online. Uh, it's on your website right now if you want to review it. Uh, but we're going to make a, a, an updated version of this, uh, prior to going to, to, um, to DCA. And then, um, yeah, all the electronic files, the G I shaped files, all that comes with it too. Next slide, please. This is a schedule. We're going to try to finish this project, um, by the end of October. Uh, so that's our goal. And so we have a lot of work to do before then. Our rough draft, we're proposing to get that done, uh, by the end of June. Okay? And a lot of steps in the middle, in the meantime. Next slide, please. And then this is, um, our community engagement plan. So we've already had a conversation with Mayor and City Council during their retreat recently. Um, we'll have three specific phases. The first phase is going to start February 18th and 24th. Um, that's when we get out and we kind of explain, uh, what the comp plan is about. Make sure we kind of give, you know, that existing conditions, the, the, the demographic, the, uh, current land uses, the environmental, uh, conditions within the city. We'll make sure we're, we're briefing that to communities so that community can comment, um, and, and capture, uh, the needs and opportunities there. So we'll do that in meetings. Um, in the first two meetings, those will be on February 18th and 24th in District One, which is on the north side of the city, and then District Six. Uh, and you see the locations there. Uh, the second time will be a workshop where we actually, uh, ask community to say, okay, well, what would you rather envision here? Um, some things you might want to see to stay the same, some things you might want to see changed. And so for all intents and purposes, we'll have a series of workshop meetings, um, during Phase Two. Again, you see the dates there, April 1st, 3rd, and 10th. And then the final phase, Phase Three, um, is when we'll come forward with our, uh, recommendations for future land use changes, policy changes, community work program items, so on and so forth. Again, we're going to very, we're going to the specific districts, um, because we want to make ourselves as accessible as possible to the residents and stakeholders within the city of South Fulton. But everybody in the city of South Fulton is welcomed at all the meetings because this is a citywide project, okay? So again, everybody, just in case y'all didn't hear it, ma'am, everybody is welcome at all the meetings. All right. Uh, and then after we get the thing, uh, drafted, again, we're trying to get that thing drafted by the end of June, uh, so that we could go about the process of getting it through A R C and then through DCA, um, by the end of October. Uh, outside of the schedule, uh, of community engagements, we are going to try to do, um, some pop-ups. Um, y'all take a lot of pictures at a lot of different events. And so if you invite us to a couple of events, we'll show up and try to get some engagement there as well. To either get feedback or input into the plan. Uh, we're going to do a bus tour, uh, to make sure we see some of the, the areas of focus from your leadership. And so if you have, if you have some specific parcels that you want to have highlighted, um, or addressed, make sure your city council mem, members are aware. Uh, and then there's going to be an, a website, uh, so that we can have online engagement there, capture, uh, the sentiments of folks. And so there's, this is, uh, our engagement plan. This is not everything, but these are the, the big chunks, um, of the, of our engagement process. Next slide, please. Okay. We're, we're gonna engage. We're, we're gonna engage multiple stakeholders, multiple groups, uh, and kind of told you already of some of our, our, uh, techniques, our tactics. But our intent is to engage. And so if you have an issue with how we're engaging, please elevate that so that we can, uh, make improvements along the way. Next slide, please. More engagement. Next slide, please. And then the website. So this is the website, uh, or draft of the website. The website will be, uh, finalized before we meet with Mayor and City Council in a couple of weeks. Next slide, please. All right. And so, uh, love this slide because what it articulates, now, what I'm trying to articulate through this slide is that red circle, uh, that community engagement, um, is, is consistent throughout the entire process. And so, yes, we're going through the existing conditions analysis and then do the report of accomplishments, so on and so forth. And eventually build a new comp plan. And the comp plan is going to stay, uh, in effect for the next five years. And certainly some, some, um, modifications can, can take place throughout. But you will be in, involved from a community perspective, um, throughout the entirety of the process. You should be. And so this is your plan. It also informs the budget. And so you should be able to track the implementation of your plan, uh, as, as time progresses. Certainly, we're making a, a plan based off of, uh, real-world conditions as we are planning. Uh, those, those conditions can change, uh, and, and those are, you know, elections and, 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 and the like. And so, um, but community is involved throughout the entire process. Next slide, please. And then next steps. So let's folks know that the city of South Fulton are, uh, is, is going through a comp plan process. Uh, we're looking at the entire, um, city of South Fulton. So everyone is welcome to participate. We're looking at, in, uh, every parcel, uh, the future land use designation for every parcel. And so just make sure your neighbors are aware, uh, and share it. So share it so that the folks who don't come to meetings like this, uh, as fun as this is, uh, make sure that your neighbors who don't come to meetings like this are aware of, of what's going on so that we can get their input too, because everyone's input matters. Uh, and then the next meetings, uh, as I mentioned earlier, February 18th, February 24th, um, and that's our first listening sessions. The end. Any questions for me? None?
So, um, really quickly, the, um, this is a public hearing. So what we want to do is, oh, is, uh, have our chair open up the public hearing. Um, nobody signed up for the public hearing. Th, this is, uh, outside of our, um, what we see normally, uh, because this doesn't have proponents and opponents like a normal case. Uh, this is our, uh, comprehensive plan update. So, um, even though people didn't fill out, uh, any comment cards, we're going to ask the public if you have any comments, uh, to make about, uh, our comprehensive plan update. If you would like to just line up, um, and give your comments. We'll start with 10, with, uh, putting 10 minutes on the clock. Uh, once that 10 minutes expires, uh, if people still want to speak, um, um, we'll, um, we'll invite the chair to ask the board if you all want to extend that time at that point. Um, and we'll ask, um, you all to, uh, keep your comments, um, um, on the subject of the comprehensive plan update. And then after that point, the board can ask your questions.
And then planning commissioners, on that point, uh, we're thankful for our technology. But when you all talk, make sure you hit that right button to turn off your mics. Because if there's more than two mics on at a time, the other mics will not work. So after you speak, just hit that point, uh, just hit that button on the right-hand side. And then everyone will be, will be able to use their microphones.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing. Come on up. Are we ready with? Make sure you, yeah, say your name and address first. Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, point of, you all have to vote to open the public hearing.
Because it's a different kind of public hearing? Okay.
A move that we open up the public hearing?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Reverend Jones. Commissioner Bing.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Boone.
Aye.
The ayes have it? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, cool. Thanks. Thank you, sir. Uh, good evening again. My name is Kimberly King. I reside in District Two of South Fulton. And my question is, when will be the very, very good presentation that you just provided, Mr. Gibbs? When will that be available for us to review? I couldn't see everything, especially some of the numbers and the dates from the back. And I know sometimes there is a substantial time lag. You know, when things get posted back to the website? Will we be able to access the presentation within the week? Well, so is it available now?
It's available.
This isn't a question, this isn't a question to answer yet. So let's, we'll answer questions after the.
Okay. Well, fine. Well, I look forward to being a part of the process. And I hope that we will communicate in the same way that our prior, uh, planning director, Shayla Reed, who did a phenomenal job of communicating and engaging the public so that everybody was encouraged to participate. And I ask, as we do that, as you guys do that, along with city council members, that you remember the varied demographics of our community. Some people are Zoomers, a lot of people are not. I live in a community with a lot of my parents' friends. And they need different signs. And I think sometimes that hasn't been taken into account with a lot of the activities. So I just hope that we'll keep that in mind so that the entire community feels welcome in the process that they did under Ms. Reed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair.
Would anyone else like to come up and speak or? Right now is an opportunity for the public to come up and speak. Okay, there we go.
Okay. Hey, I'm Catherine Davis. Um, I don't know, do I need to say my address? I'm in District Four on Jones Road. I just had a question about communication and stuff. How is all this information going to be communicated? I mean, I, I got it in my district newsletter. There's a lot of people in the community that don't have, you know, um, the district letters emailed to them or something, aren't on Facebook or anything like that. So I would, I know you said it's something about a website, but when is that going to be up and running? And is it going to be tied to the city of South Fulton website or something, a link to that? I mean, I'm just, you know, cu, I'm just curious as how all this is going to be communicated, like. And then also the meetings that you had, what times maybe, you know, I, I guess as we get closer to the dates or something, I, uh, that'll be announced, I guess. But where, you know, can we find that update and stuff and what time and stuff it's going to be? So that's all.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Alvin Reynolds. I reside in District Seven. My question was that, um, what are we doing to, um, how we're addressing the changes that are being made to the comp plan before the comp processes in this completed form? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ali Carter. I live in District One. I'm at 1363 Boat Rock Road. And, uh, my comment is, um, will there be a, uh, avenue for community to upload, um, comments, ideas? I'm sure that, uh, a lot of people in our communities have ideas for their community. And some have written white papers and, and other things that they would love to share with the board and with the development, uh, plan. So, uh, just want to make sure that there's an avenue for us to upload our ideas so that they can be looked at, um, as we put this plan together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael Pennable, District Six. Just wanted to make sure, been through multiple of these assessments from everything from housing, transportation, the whole shabooch. I was just hoping that this time that we would publicize all of the comments that were received from the community. I've seen this as to where if a certain entity wanted something to look good, the only comments or the only, um, pros put out was those that supported that. And we never saw what the other side of the story was. Doesn't matter whether you like it or not, everything that came out from the community should have been publicized so everybody can see all sides of the story. And I hope that happens this time.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Connie Robinson, District Two. Um, I heard it mentioned that this was the kickoff. And I know I've also participated in a couple of these already. So, um, I just wanted to be clear as to whether the earlier ones are no longer applicable. And we're starting from scratch with this step. And then my other question was pertaining to the report card that was mentioned. Who is actually completing that and what information are they using in order to, um, complete it? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, come on up.
Just like some of the other, uh, citizens, I just want to, I've been through quite a few of these. I'm Bear Mitch. Oh, I'm Jill Johnson. I thought everybody knew that. Anyway, uh, what I wanted to say was, uh, I've been through a lot of them and I understand quite a bit. And what concerns me the most is when we gathering this information and, uh, there has been a final decision as to the things that we had said we wanted. What happens to that information? Because in the past, it disappeared. No one can see, could, could seem to find it. And there was a lot of questions, uh, about us being able to go back and look at, at those, uh, comments that we had made. And I think it's, it would be very beneficial for each meeting that we, um, attend, that everyone will have, well, they'll have the opportunity, but should be encouraged so they will know and understand the process as well and be able to, uh, give more input. That's, that's my biggest concern.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think we have, uh, we have more time left.
Yeah, can I add something?
Yes, if we have more time, absolutely.
Um, I would like to add that it would be nice to see, uh, smaller meetings, uh, within the communities where, um, elected officials aren't invited. And it's just, um, the, uh, facilitator and the community, uh, where they can feel comfortable sharing their ideas outside of a more, um, you know, formal setting. So do take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak during this public hearing? Okay, in that case, I will close the public hearing. We'll move on to the commissioners' questions and thoughts. Commissioners, I'm going to pass it off to you.
Commissioners, if I could, just one point. For everyone who recently spoke, if you all could come out and fill out a comment card so we can start that record of comments for the, for the comp plan. Again, everyone who spoke this evening on the comprehensive plan, could you please fill out a comment card? That would help us keep track of the initial comments and then where we land. So, thank you. And I would say, fill out the back, just your name and your general question, um, so that we can. And I would say fill out the back, just your name and your general question, um, so that we can keep those questions in mind as we go through the comp plan. Thank you so much.
Uh, Ms., Ms. Kimberly from D two, I wanted to get your last name, just something for my records. Kimberly from D two, she came up here. Say it again. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Kimberly King.
King, thank you. Oh, I got it. Like royalty, I got it.
I, I, I got a, it's more of a comment than a question. I think, listen to, to what the public is saying. I, I hope that going forward, that we utilize technology in a way that, that captures a lot of that. So, you know, there's a lot of questions about, uh, communication and where can we go to find out information? There's a lot of questions of how can we add information to the conversation and discussion? And all of these are easily doable now with the technology that, that exists. And especially with the, you know, having artifacts of the conversation and discussion with what's out there in AI, things of that nature. I hope that we transcribe, since it's an easy thing to do now, we transcribe a lot of these meetings. And so the public can go back at any time and see what's been said, who said it, and, and make sure it becomes part of the record. So, you know, just a kind of, I hope that we utilize technology that is, that's easily attainable now and, and use that to address a lot of these issues that people are bringing up.
Yeah, I'm going to just add, I've had the opportunity to read multiple, uh, comprehensive plans. And as you mentioned, I've seen several times where the mayor or the city council, a new mayor was elected or new, that makes for a city council change. Since this is a public input, can we put wording in our comprehensive plan that eliminates that? Because it's, because it's the people's ideas. That shouldn't change just because the ma, the mayor changes or the city council makes changes. So is there a way that we can word this to where this five-year plan happens irregardless of who's the mayor or who's the city council?
Good evening. Um, I just also wanted to comment, um, that this is a lot of information. And, um, it's going to take communities to come together to decipher what is going on. For those communities that are composed of a large, a high number of seniors in your community, I wish you would rely on your, um, H O A to make this a part of your conversations in your meetings to try to disciple and digest what is happening. Everybody does not use technology and those that are not using it will not start using it. And, um, so we're going to have to make sure we help each other in communicating what is happening. And some person in the neighborhood needs to be that contact person to say, hey, there's a meeting wherever and get the information out and have individuals to show up. Because as we are in command of our educators using learning strategies, we are in command of our citizens using strategies to make sure everybody, regardless of what, how you learn something, how you digest something, or how you receive information, get that information because it will affect them as well. Thank you.
I do have a question. I, looking at your must list, the things that you must, the boxes you must check and the optional planning, disaster preparedness, community sustainability, green space, natural resources. In an age of climate change, how do we take things like this that are very important right now and put them on that must-do list?
It's a very good point. I have a question real quick. So, to add to your list, um, I think what I'm hearing you say is that if there's a parcel within a district or say a community is trying to do something with a parcel and has been for some time, this is an opportunity for that community to come to you with the parcel and suggest, say, a park or something like that. Is that correct? Okay.
Oh, it's closed?
No, I'm sorry. Now it's the commissioners' turn to ask all the questions.
I'm sorry. I had a question regarding what Commissioner Devon was asking.
Okay, um. Yes, let's make sure it gets addressed, absolutely, okay. Commissioners, anything else you'd like to add? I, I have one more question. Um, if you live in a district where agricultural land is prized and the community absolutely wants to move forward with protecting agricultural land, that you would just listen to the residents and support that? Uh, is that, I mean, that's kind of like a half question, but that's something I would love for you to speak to. And I think that we are ready for you to speak as well. I know it was a confusing question because it's like, not a complete thought for me, let me try again. So oftentimes protecting agricultural land is different because, difficult because there's so much interest and money that can be made, obviously. That's the thing we deal with. Um, so if a community is prizing their agricultural land and wants to keep it agricultural, this is a moment for us to protect that land. Is that correct? And now, um, unless the commissioners have anything else to add, I'd like to pass it up, back off to you. Okay. We're going to time you, so just, you know.
All right, please do. Give me two minutes. Um, all right, so unfortunately, my email address is still on the screen, okay? And so if you have, if you do want to reach out to me, you could copy that and then reach out to me. Um, and what I'll do, I'm going to do this. I'm not turning my back on y'all, just talking to the people. All right, what I'll, what I will do is ensure, all right, so what I'll do is ensure that, um, our community engagement specialist, Madison Davis gets your contact information. So we're probably going to be communicating with everyone on a regular basis via email. We're also going to be communicating with the city, city councilors and, and the like. And so, um, that's, that's how we're communicating. That's our primary form of communication. Um, if you want to be part of our distro list, um, please provide us with your email. We'll make sure that you're a part of our distro list so you're getting it directly from, uh, our team, okay? We certainly welcome, uh, HOAs and other sorts of, uh, subgroups within, uh, the City of South Fulton so that we're communicating with as many people as possible. Um, but our, our primary means will be going through, um, emails, uh, and, and indirectly with the city, okay? Um, the slides that were presented today have already been, uh, shared with the city. But if you, if you want those slides, uh, and you can take a six meg attachment, I will send it to you as well. Uh, let's see, so all the comments, um, all the comments from the city, excuse me, all the comments that are made by citizens will get recorded. Uh, we have a document to produce. Um, that document will be the plan itself. There will be an appendix to that plan. And in the appendix will be all the comments that have been received throughout the planning process. It will be the results of the surveys. It will be the results of, of all the online engagement as well. There'll be recordings of, you know, it will be, um, other sorts of documents. And those will, will fill into the appendix. And so the comments that are made by citizens and various stakeholders will not be lost. Uh, furthermore, uh, on the website itself, we will retain a repository of all of the, uh, slides, of all of the documents that we're considering, the previous plans that we're reviewing, that will be in, in the, the website. And so if you come to, um, if you come to, uh, a meeting in Phase Two and you want to see what was discussed in Phase One, those slides will be present for you to review. Comments will be, uh, also present of, of all public engagements. And, and I don't know how, uh, it's done in the City of South Fulton, but if you are recording events like today, um, you know, those recordings also make it to our website. Uh, and so you will be able to know what has happened throughout the process. Um, the previous comp plan is still in effect until this one is adopted. Um, the city administrators will be the ones who are responsible for filling out the, uh, report of accomplishments. And so we'll be working with them, uh, to, to score and grade themselves. What happens to the information, everything will be passed on to the city. And so I, I trust your city leaders to ensure that, um, that information stays available. And we're open to having meetings without elected officials. Um, transcribing and recordings. I don't know if we're going to transcribe meetings, uh, but we will, um, use various technologies to ensure that, uh, s- summations are, are captured. Um, and that will be held on the repository of the website, uh, talked about HOAs. Um, and then the way to ensure that the plan happens regardless of leadership is to, to ensure that, you know, each year, um, the plan is implemented. There's going to be, again, that community work program. You're going to have elements that need to be addressed every year. And then it's, it's a twenty-year vision with five-year, with a five-year l- look of activities, right? So I'm going to look twenty years in the, in, in the future and say, okay, well, for the next five years, these are the things we're going to do to get to that twelve-year vision, or excuse me, that twenty-year vision. And so to some degree, it's incumbent upon the citizenry to say, hey, we still want to, that twenty-year vision. This is the path. And if we got to change our steps, so be it, but we're still trying to get to that twenty-year vision. Um, and consistency is the key, right? Consistency is the key. And so that vision needs to endure beyond, uh, city administrators, city leadership. Uh, and how do we put, um, oh man, options on, oh, the optionals into must do? Uh, I would encourage you, um, if you have opt, if the optional categories, if that's something that is in, um, important, communicate with your city leaders, make sure that they are communicating with us, saying these are the things we want to see. And even if we hit it at a high level, that could, that could, um, instigate us or prompt us to say, okay, over the next five years, you need to do a more, um, thorough plan, whether it be with readiness and climate change and things of that nature. Did that do a good job?
Great job.
Fantastic. All right, so I'm going to cut this off and stop talking. All right.
Director McLendon? He's going to come and tell us something.
Thank you. So, all right, so, uh, you normally don't respond to, uh, so the, um, I, I wanted to say something really quickly. The, um, website that is being created specifically for this comprehensive plan, um, effort is where we really want to focus, uh, our attention, um, as far as, um, receiving comments, receiving the information, um, from our citizens when it comes to being able to, uh, communicate with you and garner your comments and maintain your comments, um, which is a lot of, um, the questions that I heard from you all. I know Mr. Gibbs, uh, gave you his email address and, and, uh, feel free to use it. Um, but once we launch our website, what you're going to see is, um, you're going to see signs around the city and flyers and, um, QR codes. All of that is going to be directing you back to that website. Uh, and that's really where we, where we want you to go. This presentation will, um, get posted to that website. Um, the, so, um, when you, when you're out talking to people, uh, commissioners and, and citizens, and you're talking to your neighbors, send them to the website. Um, and I talked about stability earlier, um, with us, um, having our, our planning group fully filled out. Uh, part of stability, one of the things that our planning department used to do, um, was we, was get people's emails and we had email lists that we, um, where they did a lot of community engagement. Well, um, over time, that information got lost when staff went away. Uh, and so what one of our efforts in twenty twenty-five is going to be is to start pulling that information and make sure that we're keeping it in a place where it's not going to get lost in the future. And this, um, comp plan website is really going to be the beginning of our efforts to start pulling in citizen information for people who want to, uh, remain in contact with the City of South Fulton, um, with our planning efforts, uh, and so that we can, uh, really be able to stay in, in constant contact with you all. Um, we are also, um, bringing in some, some different ways to communicate with people, um, via email, via text messages for people who want to receive them, um, et cetera. Uh, and so, um, once you see that website, you're going to start, uh, when you come to, to city hall, to council meetings, to rec centers, et cetera, you're going to start seeing those signs, click, uh, you know, uh, take pictures of the QR codes, go to the website, um, send it to your friends and stay in touch with us and spread the word, uh, for the comp plan update. And we want as many people to participate as we can possibly get. Thank you.
Thank you. So if anyone had anything else to say or ask about that, um, someone will speak to you after the meeting. We'll now move on to old business. Um, KC twenty-four dash zero one two, application by S E C C land, Hakim Hilliard, requesting a rezoning from C one to C U P. And with that, I'll pass it off to Mr. Williams.
Yeah, C twenty-four dash zero one two, with long with the concurrent variance is C B twenty-four dash zero zero three. The address is Zero Cameron's Road. The applicant requesting a rezon from C one, which are limited commercial, also within Clifton Dale Overlay District to C U P, which is our Community Unit Plan District, um, to construct three hundred and fourteen multi-unit family units. The applicant is also seeking a concurrent variance to exceed the height restriction to no more than fifty feet of twenty-seven point zero four acres of land. This is in Council District Two.
Okay, thank you. We will now open the public hearing and the applicant is ready.
Thank, um, thank you, Madam Chair, Hakim Hilliard with the Schillivitz Grubman Law Firm, eighteen thirty-four Independent Square, Dunwoody, Georgia, three oh three three eight. I'm here this evening on half of, on behalf of, uh, Southeast Capital Partners with respect to this application. Uh, I'm here to ask for one more deferral. Uh, you all have seen me, you think my middle name is deferral. Uh, we unfortunately underestimated our ability to get in front of, uh, the folks for our final conversations in, during the holidays. Uh, and so we would like to have one more deferral. Uh, and we, uh, will be prepared to come and present the request in full at your, um, February meeting if you will indulge us.
Okay, thank you. We have changed our deferral process and we only allow one deferral. Um, you can only defer once, and I believe you've deferred twice, um, already in two different months. So I'm actually going to ask for some help on that from Director McLendon. Another deferral is being requested and he has deferred it twice. Um, and we only allow once. We have changed our policy around that because we just had way too many deferrals. Um, and so we. Yeah, I don't know that he can even ask for it.
This applicant was in the process prior to the changing of the rules. So technically it's a clean slate for twenty twenty-five. So it will be up to the board, the planning commission, to decide how they want to move forward. But technically, this application was prior to that rule change.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, do we have any, are you finished?
I'll just additionally, uh, share, uh, I, I have been in the, the impacted community, Clifton Dale Neighborhood Association. I've been, and I don't know that Marcus Carter is here. I talked to him earlier today and, and, and communicated and confirmed with him that we were going to be seeking a deferral. And I knew that he wanted to be present for the actual meeting when this, when this took place. So I, I mean, we ran anticipation. But I didn't know about the rule changes. My apologies, so.
Okay, thank you. We've already opened the public hearing, so I'm going to see if there are any cards for or against this case.
So a vote has to take place to open the public hearing and that vote did not take place.
Okay. This is new information for me. I have just been opening the public hearing, um, without a. I have just been opening the public hearing without a vote. Director McLendon? I got legal advice from the Old City Attorney and Director McLendon that I don't have to vote to open the public hearing. I'm happy to do it, it just does add time to our meeting and I'm just trying to be efficient for us.
I think a vote is required.
Okay. I'll now entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I make a motion when we open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Perry. Commissioner Reverend Jones. Commissioner Bailey.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Boone.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. All right, so if you don't want to add anything else, I will see if we have any comment cards for or against this case. And we'll just move forward with hearing the case. Thank you.
So we have one card in opposition, Alvin Reynolds.
And nothing for, is that correct? Just one opposition?
We do have a four, Hakeem Hilliard.
Right, okay, cool, wonderful. All right, let's move on to the against. Oh, he has changed his mind. Okay, we will now, he's good. We'll now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
No? What's that? There's no comments. He already spoke. Would you like him to speak again? And he already spoke, but I mean, if you want him to, I'm not sure.
Okay, to be clear with everyone, we're creating a new process around deferrals and we are all adapting to it. So we appreciate your patience. I will now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, staff, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Perry. Commissioner Reverend Jones. Commissioner Bailey. Commissioner Devon. Commissioner Boone.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. I will now entertain, actually, further discussion commissioners. Let's discuss.
I'm sorry, I'm confused.
It is quite confusing, yes.
The applicant asked for a deferral. Staff said that he was in the middle of the process before our policy change. Staff said that he has a clean slate in 2025. What are we doing?
If I could step in, I thought you all were, you don't have to have a public hearing to consider a deferral. I thought you all were trying to, I thought you all wanted to move forward.
I did too. That's, I thought the feedback I got from commissioners that they didn't want to defer it. So I thought we would move forward with the case.
Yeah, so if you wanted to defer, you
Okay, great. I will now entertain a motion to defer this case to the next meeting.
So move, now the commission, motion to defer.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Perry. Commissioner Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Bailey.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Boone.
Nay.
Staff, what was that? Did the ayes have it?
The ayes have it.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Yes. We'll now move on to item two, KC 24-025, an application by KMT Partners LLC requesting a rezoning from AG1 to M1.
Yes, KC 24-025, along with concurrent variance 24-009. The address is 0 Roosevelt Highway. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from AG1, which is our agricultural zone district to M1, which is our light industrial district, wanting to submit to parcels at 0 Roosevelt Highway to develop a 195,000 square foot light industrial warehouse and distribution facility. The applicant is also seeking a concurrent variance from section 405-01 to reduce the rear buffer from 100 feet to 50 feet. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
We actually have to go ahead and entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Okay. I will now entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Properly moved and seconded, staff, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Perry. Commissioner Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Bailey.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Boone.
Aye.
Okay.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Henry Bailey, counsel for the applicant, KMT Partners. If you go to the, well, I'll start here. This is, the cover page is, kind of shows the aerial of where the site is located on Roosevelt Highway, not far from its intersection with South Fulton Parkway. If you go to the next slide, please. I'm joined this evening by Mr. Gregory Bowler Jr. in the back of the room, who is the founder and managing partner of KMT Partners, myself, as I mentioned earlier, at Morris Manning and Martin, 3343 Peach Street Road, Northeast Atlanta, Georgia. And then our civil engineer, Antonio Sample, who is seated over here from Air B and Associates. Next slide, please. So the proposal here is to rezon this property from AG1 to M1. We have gone through this process and we were before you, this case was deferred from your planning commission meeting in December because when we initially had our first public participation meeting, the overwhelming feedback that we received from that meeting, which was on Zoom, was that there needed to be another conversation with the constituents and the neighbors nearby in person. And so we requested a deferral from that meeting to allow time to schedule a meeting with these persons. And we did that on January 9th, just past week. We hosted that meeting in person at Welcome All Park. And we provided that information, the contents of that meeting via the public participation report that is required as a part of this submittal. We had a lively discussion. We addressed many of the concerns that were brought up by the neighbors, i.e. what is the intention of the property? What are the traffic considerations? And things like that, especially considering its location on Roosevelt Highway. And so that meeting was very fruitful. And I think by the end of that meeting, the questions to the answers, or the answers to the questions, rather, were resolved or at least answered to a point where there was an understanding of what the purpose and what the plan was for the project. Next slide, please, Mr. Williams. This is, as noted before, this property is located along Roosevelt Highway. It's located in District 5, in close proximity to District 3. And because of that proximity to District 3, that was part of the reason why we went ahead and had a broader meeting in person on January 9th. Next slide, please. Again, here is sort of an aerial of the site right next to the Old Fulton Bay Seafood Restaurant. I don't know if you all familiar with that, but that's the general location. Next slide, please. And just to make this point, the only access to the site will be off of Roosevelt Highway. The lone access will be off of Roosevelt Highway. Current zoning is AG, is this working now? Ah, yes. New stuff, thank you, Mr. McLendon. The current zoning of the property is AG1. And again, we're requesting to rezon it to M1. You can see the surrounding zoning on the map largely commercial. Again, just some of the other facilities in the area. You've got Hartsville-Jackson Airport not far. You've got the Costco building, Costco wholesale facility not far, Del Monte not far, Clorox not far. So these are the sort of the major uses in the area. I won't go through the entire slide, but you can see some of the users in the area. We've got a letter of support from the nearby Wellspring Living Facility. We thought it was important that, considering the status of that facility in the area, that we reach out to them and talk to them about this project, which Mr. Bowler did. And they were willing to provide support for our project. And so here's sort of what the site looks like now from the street view. Over here on the left-hand side of the screen, does this have a pointer on it? On the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see the railroad tracks that come down, up and down Roosevelt Highway. Our property is across the street there, where it's currently wooded. And here is image or rendering and elevation of what the finished product will roughly look like. And the intention here was, and this is from Roosevelt Highway, the intention here was to try to construct a building that screened as much as possible the truck parking and the docks from the public view. And you can see that from, you'll see it in the conceptual site plan that's shown in a couple of slides. But the right-hand corner of the building, if you will, contains the office space that's sort of butted out to cover the truck bay, to cover the ongoing truck traffic. And here's a closer view of that that kind of illustrates that even more. You can see sort of in the back-end corner where the bays are hidden from view from the public. And here is sort of the conceptual site plan, roughly 200,000 square feet. And you can see where the corners of the building sort of come down, extend out farther again to shield the activity of the actual building. And that's all. We're happy to take any questions that you all might have from the public.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any cards for this case?
Yes, we have two cards against.
Okay, wonderful. We'll move on to that now.
Okay, our first card against is from Alvin Reynolds.
Come on up, Mr. Reynolds.
Good evening once again, Alvin Reynolds. I reside in District 7, 585 Kings Place, that's Riverdale, Georgia. I just want to point out some things here that we should start to take notice of. And that's these concurrent variances. And so with this concurrent variance that is being asked for and proposed, you see you want a reduction from 100 feet to 50 feet. We have to start to take notice as to what is around us. These barriers are put in place for a reason. And we need to make sure that we are getting an adequate explanation as to why we want a reduction in these buffers and so forth. So I wanted to make that plain and have that pretty much on your radar, that we are going to have to start to take seriously about these variances that are being asked for. And does it even make sense to approve them? You know, so again, I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have one more?
Yes, Michael Venable.
Michael Venable, District 6. Michael Jackson had a song that was very popular. You want to be starting something. This is going to start something. And, you know, I guess I'll use the picture since it's here. I want you to look at the map. You know, people lost elections because it was perceived that people were trying to support warehouses in the community. I've got residents in the city of South Fulton that are just distraught. And we talked about it with the comprehensive plan, that neighboring cities would put warehouses right next to the border where this city had housing developments. Now, if you go look at the map, you see those subdivisions? They're already caught between the warehouses on one side. Now we're going to trap them in from a warehouse on the other side. You know, and people talk about, you know, property values. And I think there is some merit to that. But I like to focus on appeal. Somebody's seeing that, who's going to want to live there now? Look, you've got houses to the right, across the street directly. I mean, they brought it up, you know, we took the remnants of what was left when everybody annexed the area. So it's chaotic. This is making it more chaotic. Instead of us focusing areas that we had specifically, like Fulton Industrial for that, we're just invading this area. If you remember, like, a meeting or two ago, there was a case that, okay, we want to change this to industrial zone. All of you voted no. You saw that this was not proper. Now we're trying to perpetuate something that was the biggest issue in this last election. The facility itself, probably very nice, but I'm still looking at the location. We're starting something that is going to set a precedent to where now somebody's going to come in beside you all's subdivision and say, well, you know, they did it over there. They right beside, we could go do it here. So I'm saying, we've got to be very careful, you know. I don't think that this is an appropriate move globally for this city because now it kind of shows that there is a lack of concern with property owners, particularly residents, as far as protecting their quality of life and making a place amenable and desirable to live. And that's what I'm saying. I think that this one needs to be denied.
Okay, thank you. And I think that's it for our cards for today. So we'll go back to rebuttal time. How much time do we have? Okay.
Good evening again. Thank you to Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Venables. I appreciate their comments and their vigor for wanting the best for the city of South Fulton and their neighborhoods. Certainly do. But to Mr. Reynolds' first point with respect to the buffer, we actually just recently discovered with staff that we don't need the concurrent variance for the buffer. I think that's noted in your staff report because the site, as shown now, complies with the requirement. We have that shown on the site plan as well. With respect to Mr. Venables' comments, I think it's important that we understand that this site, the proposed rezoning for this site to light industrial is consistent and compatible with the current comprehensive plan. The current comprehensive plan identifies this property as industrial. And our proposal to change the zoning of the property to industrial is aligned with that. So with respect to Mr. Venables, I'll say that regardless of what is here now, because of the comprehensive plan designation, the policy guide is telling the city and is telling the residents that this particular site has been designated for industrial. And I'll reserve the rest of my time to Mr. Bowler here, the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, hello. Good evening. Appreciate that, appreciate the feedback. A couple of notes that I did want to bring up. Historically, this corridor has been an industrial corridor. Roosevelt, as well as South Fulton. A lot of the housing that has been squeezed in there, a lot of that happened during '05, '06, you know, pre-'08, where they were just building houses anywhere. But the industrial was already there. So this has always been an industrial corridor. Another aspect of it is, I do, you know, I understand the aspect of looking at it from the residents and property values. And I think property values have continued to go up every single year, even with the dirtiest of industrial around it, which is around my own neighborhood. And so that is not a diminishing of any type of values at all. And then lastly, I think we have to consider all residents of the city of South Fulton. Not all residents own a home. You have individuals that are renting and are just trying to make ends meet and do not have college degrees and ultimately are looking for hourly jobs. And so the opportunity here for them to be able to get And so the opportunity here for them to be able to get those jobs are in the warehousing and a skill and vocational training. Now, also in the warehousing, you do have individuals that have college degrees and they have um more of salary aspect, right? So it's a mixture, but it allows that upward mobility. Um, and so while I understand everybody wants to not have any industrial, industrial is very much a part of the fabric of metro Atlanta, and that is what makes metro Atlanta great. And so um I will leave the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I'll now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, staff, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Perry? Commissioner Reverend Jones? Commissioner Bailey?
Are we voting on the approval or?
Commissioner Devon? Commissioner Devon? Commissioner Boone?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Oh my gosh. Okay, turning it off when I want it on. Okay, commissioners. Commissioner Perry?
I have a question for the applicant. Do you have, um, have you already garnered prospective tenants for the warehouse?
Uh, it's kind of a chicken and egg type of thing, right? Tenants do not um find interest in sites that aren't zoned first. However, do I have interest from individuals that would potentially lease it? Yes, but, you know, it's a multitude of different options, but nothing solidified.
Can you share what kind of businesses these prospective tenants might?
It will, it will be underneath the light industrial uses. And so that's typically more of e-commerce, distribution, light manufacturing, which will include some type of assemblage, right? So for an example, if it's a construction supply company and they're delivering doors, right? There's an assemblage aspect to that before they do the, the actual distribution. And so that might be something within this use.
Commissioner Perry, do you feel good about that? Okay. Um, yes, go ahead.
It's not, it's really a comment. And I just want to pick up where one of our public comments stated, Michael Jackson, 1982. He started something. There's a line in there where Michael says, if you can't feed the baby, then don't have a baby. And what it means is if you can't take care of something, don't destroy it. The comment was, was that, well, this was industrial, we put some houses in there. Well, I'm a native of South Fulton. This was rural and agricultural, and then they squeezed in industrial. And this is, I'm District Three, this is my backyard. I don't want this in my backyard. I think we're on Fulton Industrial Parkway. So it's a lot of places to put it here. And then Warehouse City, which is Union City, and we don't wanna be called Warehouse City with the great city of South Fulton. But Warehouse City, which is Union City, which is right there, they're building warehouses that are, some of them are vacant. They're just building them. They're vacant. No one's in there. And, and I think that we have to make it pretty, colleagues. I think we make it look pretty. Because you always try to put lipstick on a pig that shouldn't be somewhere. You make it look pretty. Cause you know that there's gonna be some adverse effects to it actually being there. Because somebody else is not gonna want it in their backyard. The question is, well, you know, we can't grow and have density. You know, you, you know, you can't love for Amazon to show up at your house in 24 hours and you don't have warehouses. But we do have warehouses. We just don't need more of them. Make use of the ones that are there. And let's, instead of making pretty warehouses, let's build a pretty hospital in this area. How about that? That's my discussion.
Thank you.
Can I respond or not?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, cool.
But you can respond to any questions that are asked directly to you.
Okay, that was, got it.
I think that was more of a comment, yeah. Commissioners, does anyone down there want to say anything? Yes, go ahead.
Uh, you guys had the uh meeting on uh, your, your public meeting on the ninth of, of January, right? That's the evening before the snowstorm. So I was just wondering what kind of participation you had.
Yeah, we ended up having 20 people that was there.
And secondly, the, my biggest issue with it is, I'm very familiar with that property. And as it stands right now, from about seven o'clock in the morning till about eight-thirty, the traffic is already back to pass your entrance. And you're gonna put another, how many trucks do you estimate are gonna be going in and out of this ground?
Uh, on a daily standard, because it's so small, as far as a 200,000 square footer, it's not like a, a million square foot Walmart or, or Amazon. I mean, you're essentially probably looking at, you know, 10 trucks a day.
But even with 10, you're probably what, 1,000, 1,200 feet from the entrance to?
We are, we are, yeah, half, half of a mile from South Fulton Parkway. So our advantage is that we're so close uh to South Fulton.
You already have traffic twice a day, like I said, in morning rush hour and afternoon rush hour. The traffic's back to your entrance.
Mo- most of the truck traffic is, is actually during the middle of the day. Um, they avoid rush hour traffic. But, but I, I hear everything that you're saying. Um, there is a part from a traffic aspect. We had to do a trip generation, and our biggest thing right now, I wanted to make sure that if there was an opportunity to be able to get a light installed at South Fulton and Roosevelt, we were willing to pay for that. We offered that up to DOT. We've escalated it through the city. Um, and unfortunately, there's not enough traffic to be able to support a light, even with somebody saying that they will pay for it. While I do not live here, I have a lot of family that's here. I do work and play here. My kids play football at Welcome Mall Park. I am very much active in South Fulton and drive this a lot. And so I can tell you that a light would be a big benefit there. But from a industrial standpoint, it's actually a lower impact than if you had retail, if you had a gas station there, which most likely will be there, about a seafood bay. If you had a hospital there, I mean, it actually makes it a lot worse.
Okay, thank you. Anything else down there? Oh, yes.
Giovanni, Giovanni Smith-Vickers, District One. Um, my question is, is have you looked into any mixed-use planning? Um, I'm a, I'm a planner myself, and I dealt with a lot of the warehouses in Union City. I used to be a planner in Union City, so I'm very familiar. And I'm just curious to know what kind of mixed-use have you looked at? Um, I've seen too many times, myself as well, just like the other, the other commissioner said, um, we see these warehouses be built and they go empty. I've also seen where we've had proposed tenants as well. So that, for me, is not really like a good answer when you said you didn't really have, you had some prospects, but you didn't really have anyone yet. And I have seen where people have committed to buildings um prior to them being, um, prior to them being built. So I'm just curious to know, what are your other options? Because the warehouse, I mean, we're just, we're constantly seeing them.
Your, your thought is that, you know, warehousing is not a good business plan, is what you're saying?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
It can be, but I'm asking, have you looked at mixed-use development with the, with doing the warehouses? What, what benefit does the community have from it?
There's, there's no benefit to adding mixed-use development at that location. One, a couple of things, a couple of things. At the corner where there is College Park, closest to South Fulton Parkway, that is owned by a multifamily developer. Guess what most likely is gonna be there? Apartments, right there at that corner. You have the seafood bay that's gonna sell. You also have raw land that's next to that. Most likely seafood bay for the price they're asking is most likely gonna be a gas station. So the next land that's around there, there's not much else that can be there by the current zoning of the residential. That, on top of what the battery plant necessarily is doing, is, is going to be a lot. So technically, there is a mixed-use aspect coming. All of it actually helps to add a light, which is what they need at that intersection. Right now, there is nothing slowing down any of the traffic coming from South Fulton Parkway on that off-ramp going on to Roosevelt. It's causing a lot of accidents. And so from a warehousing standpoint, just a little insight there, the vacancy rate right now, and, and everything is slow for real estate overall, where we're, it's a cycle. We're pretty much at the part of the cycle where we are getting out of the bottom. Atlanta vacancy rates right now are about 8%. That is still below the 10-year historical average, okay? And so from a vacancy rate standpoint, it's extremely strong and resilient. We're not concerned necessarily about that because the demand is driven by everybody in this room. Everybody that has Amazon Prime, everybody that has anything delivered through Walmart or through Target. That is, that demand is coming from this room. And so I did not look at mixed-use, but I will tell you that that mixed-use is happening in that corridor. Now, is there other locations that make sense for mixed-use? Yes. And I'm looking at that in those locations, but it doesn't make sense there.
Commissioner Perry?
Yeah, just have a comment. So I, I, I'm not a, a, a big warehouse proponent, but I am, you know, we just had an opening session about the comprehensive plan, and I am a big proponent of that. And I think that we need to, as a community, follow along. Now, with the update of the comprehensive plan, maybe this changes. And maybe this isn't zoned industrial, maybe it's zoned something else. And, and I will be a proponent of, of that because that's the community speaking of what we see in the future. But honestly, that is not gonna be residential land. I- 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 it's not gonna be a new subdivision coming there. And there's a reason why the current plan has it as industrial, because that is the most... The, the, the best use of land, looking at it, you can see that's the best use of it currently. Now, if that changes in, in, in the update of the comprehensive plan, I'll be the first one to vote it down. But, you know, one of the things that we, we hear constantly in these meetings, and, and I agree with the people who oppose the changing in zoning, is that you should follow the comprehensive plan, and, and that gives some, some stability to your community and what it's going to look like. And I agree. That, that's zoned, uh, if the comprehensive plan says it's gonna be industrial, when that changes, then, then I will change. But is it really going to be anything else? And, and I hear you. I hear that, you know, there is some residential on, on the other side of that. But city of South Fulton, for our piece of it, has been determined to be, this is gonna be industrial land going forward until that changes. So I, I mean, I, I agree, or, or I respect Commissioner's uh comments. But I think that we are in the middle of kicking off a comprehensive plan to look at, you know, is this gonna be, because someone could say, well, you know, where Six Flags is, you know, the best use of that was to put a bunch of warehouses there. And somebody popped in and said, or you could put Six Flags there. You know, I think that we need to think outside of the box of what something looks like. Because when we zone this in the comprehensive plan, the reason why I think, or the beauty of doing this every five years is, how's that working out for you? How's that looking? Was that the best use of that? Did you know that right at the face of, uh, the tail end of, of District Three, that you would have all these warehouses popping up in Union City? Which I spoke to the mayor of Union City, and he told me, if you got a problem with it, buy the land. Because I'm getting, I'm, this is a tax, I'm getting great taxes, brother. And, uh, but I have to deal with it. Right now, I'm staying in Fayetteville because I can't get outside of my home because they have torn up South Fulton Parkway, I mean, excuse me, Stonewall Tail and blocked it off for a week. So I pray no heart attacks. I pray no strokes. Nothing happens. Because if anybody needs any medical attention in that area tonight, they are called, do not call the ambulance. Call Willie Watkins funeral home. Or Murray, brother, funeral home. But either way, they're dead, and some developer didn't give a damn. That's in the Bible.
Okay. Oh, wasn't any other questions?
I'm not sure.
Do you wanna run through the rest of our questions before, I don't wanna sit down and then give?
Does anyone have any more questions? I do have a comment. Oh, you have a question?
No.
Okay. Um, you know, it's just between Union City and the warehouses that we already have in the city of South Fulton, we have a lot of warehouse jobs. And I think that if there was a need for that, it is absolutely filled from my perspective. And that is all that I would like to add. And if no one else has anything else to say, then I will entertain a motion to approve staff's findings of fact.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Properly moved and seconded. Staff, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Perry? Commissioner Reverend Jones? Commissioner Bailey?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon? Commissioner Boone?
Okay, the ayes have it. I will now entertain a motion to approve, deny, or defer this case.
Make a motion to deny Z24-025/CV24-009.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Staff, could you please, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioners, is, is there any further discussion before we vote on this? No, okay. Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Perry? Commissioner Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Bailey?
Nay.
Commissioner Devon?
Nay.
Commissioner Boone?
I'm sorry. Tell me again what we're doing. Just one second. I'm sorry, I just had a break.
The motion is on the table for denial.
No.
That's my answer. Nay.
You're against the denial. You approve it. You, you, if the motion on the table is a denial...
I don't go to deny it soon.
If you want it, you say aye. If you want to deny it, it would be an aye. But if you're against it?
I'm sorry. Yeah, because people are learning. His vote, that, that was confusing, so. Staff, could you please call the roll? Let's start, let's just go from there. Is that reasonable?
Excuse me, excuse me. Can we restate?
Let's go ahead and restate the motion. We can second it again, and then we'll redo the vote.
Motion for denial of Z24-025/CV24-099.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Staff, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Perry? Commissioner Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Bailey?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Nay.
This is a motion to deny.
Commissioner Boone? No.
I'm sorry.
Nay. The nays have it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Z24-025-0CV24-009.
Nay. Nay.
Is there a second?
Second. I mean, excuse me, I can't second, I'm a nay. You can second it, man. Go ahead, someone second it. I don't even want to second it.
Second. Okay, properly moved and seconded, staff, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Perry?
Nay.
Commissioner Reverend Jones?
Nay.
Commissioner Bailey?
Nay.
and recall that
Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
Commissioner Boone?
Aye.
if you all are speaking, it's going to be hard for us to hold our meeting,
The ayes have it. Okay, the ayes have it.
so let's try to keep it down.
Before we move on to the next case, I want to acknowledge that we've been here for almost two hours, and there's a lot of, there are a lot of people here. And we are going to take a five-minute bathroom break, and then we will come right back and continue.
And the bathrooms are right out the door straight ahead. And the bathrooms are right out the door straight ahead.
All right, I would certainly love for everyone to reconvene and recall that if you all are speaking, it's going to be hard for us to hold our meeting, so let's try to keep it down.
Okay, then we're going to get back to the meeting. We'll move on to item three, case Z 24-027, an application by Salahan Real Properties LLC and Battle Law requesting a rezoning from AG1 to CUBC. With that, I will pass it off to Mr. Williams.
Z 24-027, the address is 3A0 Thaxton Road, the applicant requesting a rezoning from AG1, which is our April Culture District, along with the Clifton Overlay District and Suburban C, which is our Suburban C District, also within the Clifton Overlay District, to CUP, which is our Community Unit Plan District, also in the Clifton Overlay District to develop 42 single-family detached homes on 17.40 acres of land. This is in Council District Two, staff is recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. I will now entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Anyone? Properly moved and seconded, staff, could you please call the roll?
So we're going to do a show of hands for the opening and closing. So can we do a show of hands for all that want to open?
Love it. Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, really quickly, our AV team is telling us that you all need to speak more closely into the mics so that they can hear you on YouTube.
Okay, thank you.
Am I good to go?
I believe so. The timer is set, we are good to go for the public hearing? Okay.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. My name is Josh Mahoney, and I'm an attorney at Battle Law PC, which is at 3562 Haversham and Northlake in Tucker, Georgia. Here this evening on behalf of the applicant for the proposed rezoning of property off of Thaxton Road from AG1 and SUBC to CUP, you'll see a little change already. We're looking, instead of doing 47 homes, to do 42 homes on this property. And what I'm going to do this evening is do just a little, a brief refresher for you all on where this property is and what the site plan looks like. But I really want to focus on what's changed since the December 18th Planning Commission meeting. Basically, I've given you all a document that has come about as a result of the neighboring community. They sent us some comments that they would like to see instantiated on the site plan, and I'm happy to report that we are able to accommodate almost all of them, and I'll cover what exceptions there are. So here's an aerial view for you. The property is highlighted here in red. You can see that the property is situated between Old Fairburn Road and Albany Way on the north side of Thaxton Road, across from Wolf Creek Circle. It's also adjacent to High Point Trail, the northeast corner of the subject property. This is the zoning map, and you can see the property has a unique zoning situation going on. It has two zonings, AG1 in the back and SUBC in the front. This rezoning is an opportunity to fix that dilemma. We're just going to rezone, we're looking to rezone the entire thing to CUP. We've already got some CUP zoning up to the north as well as to the east, so we wouldn't be introducing a new zoning district into the area. Really just fixing the split zoning that we have here, as well as bringing new housing into the area. So I mentioned a little bit already that we got some comments from the community, and so let's go ahead and focus in on this document that I put before you. We received 23 items from the community. You'll see on this list, there's 21. That's because in speaking with the HOA president, Mr. Allen, who was here this evening, we were able to strike two items off, one pertaining to mailboxes. The one comment from the community said they wanted the mailboxes to be uniform. However, the United States Post Master General does not actually allow us to have mailboxes at all, so we have to have a mail kiosk, so we struck that, and we have our mail kiosks shown on our site plan. There was another item that called for all mortgages to be fee simple mortgages. However, that condition's not enforceable. What I think the intent of that condition was, was to ensure that there's as few rental opportunities as possible in this proposed community. And so we struck the mortgage condition, and instead we changed item 20 to address a, to impose a rental cap that would be put into the HOA covenants and restrictions. We proposed 10%, or I proposed 10% to Mr. Allen. He seemed amenable to that at the time. He said he would take that to his community, but we have some room to work with that. And lastly, item number one was one that we changed. The community asked us to do 35 units down from 47. Unfortunately, with the other changes that we've put in place here, we can't afford to go that low. However, we tried our best to meet them in the middle, so we're proposing 42 units. These are single-family detached homes. We're looking to install a deceleration lane to help get the traffic, the new, if there's new traffic coming on Thaxton, they'll be able to move off of Thaxton to enter the community, to help mitigate any traffic impacts there. We've increased the size of our setbacks to increase the space between the homes, as well as the distance from the street. The community has proposed various building materials, numbers of garages, lighting trees, greenscape buffers. All of these things we are able to meet, and I want to finally just zoom in a little bit on item number two. Originally, we were proposing a window between 1,600 and 2,500 square foot homes. The community has asked us to raise the maximum on that window up to 3,800 square feet, such that the average square foot of homes is 2,500 square feet. My client, again, is willing to do this, so we're going to have a bigger window for the sizes of the homes in this proposal, so that the community is comfortable with the types of homes that are coming in here. This site plan has already been updated to address the changes. In the text on your right here, you'll see that our setbacks are updated to reflect those that the community asked for. We've reduced the number of units, that's also reflected here. That in turn, of course, has resulted in a lowering of density. The suburban neighborhood land use, which applies to this property, allows for up to three. After our reduction, we're down to 2.56 units per acre, so we are well within the density cap for the land use, and so we do comply with the comprehensive plan. Of course, we do have our 50-foot buffer as required by the Clifton Dale Overlay District, as well as several amenity spaces on two sides of the property. Of note, there is a connection to High Point Trail on the, what is actually the northeast corner of the plan that's shown sideways here. I want to note that that connection is to be gated. That's going to be an emergency access only, and what that means is there will be a gate, a permanent gate installed, that only emergency services will be able to open and close. So folks in this neighborhood will not be able to freely enter the High Point neighborhood, and vice versa. The purpose for this is that High Point Trail currently only has one point of access on its other side. And if there were an emergency, perhaps a fire in the neighborhood, and that entrance is blocked, emergency services would not be able to get in. So adding this gate here adds some resiliency to that neighborhood, while also giving this neighborhood the same benefit. Should this entrance be blocked, emergency services will be able to get in from the other side. So having that connection point is really a safety measure for both the existing community and this future community. These are the elevations we showed you all last time. We haven't had a chance to update them in light of the new conditions. However, I think we can consider these homes the floor, and as we move to, which we continue to work with the community, we can work on getting some updated elevations to reflect the building materials, size, and the like. Lastly, we have included a children's playground, dog park. This is included just for demonstration purposes. They will be separated by a fence. We don't want an open dog park by a playground, but so you can see them both, it's shown as this way. And then another park in the corner of the property as well. And with that, I will reserve the rest of my time and take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any cards for this case?
We have another card by Richard Allen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Richard B. Allen, and I'm a resident of District Three, which is on Wolf Creek Circle. Where this property is located, the entrance point is within one block of where I live, okay? So just for the record, okay, on December the 5th, we had a virtual meeting with one of the representatives, Mr. Mahoney, the gentleman that just spoke, okay? And he presented his plan to us, okay? And after doing so, we let him know that we had some serious concerns about what was first presented, okay, and that we would like to get back with them, okay? So on December the 12th, we was able to get back with them through attorney Michelle Battle of the Battle Group, Attorney Group, on another virtual meeting. And at that time, we presented a proposal to counter or change and make recommendations for them to do some different things. So that meeting was very fruitful, okay? So since then, we've been able to work out various details, of which he just outlined. So at this point, we are in agreement, and they are too, for us to enter into an agreement that we would like to...
Your time is almost up, I'm so sorry.
...tender this information along with the agreement that we have worked out for this potential development, and that's where we stand right now, okay, with this property.
Thank you. Do we have any comment cards against?
Yes, the first card is for Karen Ashley. Shaw Mitchell, we have a card.
Storm.
Oh, Storm Mitchell. And last one, Kimberly King.
Good evening again, Planning Commission. My name is Kimberly King, and I reside in District Two in the High Point subdivision. I would just begin by saying I have great respect for Mr. Allen, having known him for many, many years, and I know his dedication to the community. What I would ask at this point, I've written a whole bunch of notes, as a part of the High Point community, which abuts this, as was described, we haven't received these updates, so some of the concerns that I had have been addressed, some but not all. And I guess that's one thing that I would ask now, that maybe as a part, as we look at conference and planning and just how we work with communities, that if it affects one community, that we all be kept up to speed as to updates. And we don't, and quite frankly, we don't have a lot of formalized HOAs throughout South Fulton. And it would be great to read the updates as Mr. Allen kind of referenced. We, so I guess that's the main thing. I would just like to hear what they plan to do with High Point, the High Point community, because we have expressed concerns. We've had to work through that many, many times to make sure that traffic does not come through our community, because it is an established community of about 82 homes, and it's a two-lane street. My initial concerns, now that they've reduced the number of houses, I would just say that the proposed subdivision will dump out essentially two-lane streets, one in one direction, one in another direction. Thaxton, which lets out to Old Fairburn or Butner, none of those are four-lane roads. So 42, whether it's 42 or 47, you're still looking at an additional 100 cars. And, you know, we have a lot of older neighbors, schools, children, et cetera, and it does impact the quality of living. But I will say, if Mr. Allen is okay with it, I'm okay, but I would just ask that the Battle Law firm do a better job of engaging with the other communities and keeping us up to date, and that has not really been the case. And I will say in their defense, the mail is problematic. They have a tendency to mail things out in time, but they don't reach us in time, and that's not their fault. And the other thing I would ask that you guys consider should go forward is that the signage issue be addressed. If you're driving up and down Thaxton Road, it was just one sign, but when I drive, and this is me, I look straight ahead. I don't drive like this. So unless you're driving like this, or maybe you have a passenger, you're going to miss the sign, so you would have missed when the meeting was going to take place. And I think that's a huge issue, that we allow developers to put up one sign, often with very small print, and I wear glasses, I'll admit that, but it makes it very difficult for residents to see when the meetings take place. And again, as I kind of said earlier, we are allowing developers to only host Zoom meetings. Most of the residents, at least half the folks in my subdivision and neighboring ones, some are in their late 70s, 80s, et cetera, the friends of my parents, they don't want to Zoom. And the meetings have been changed, and several people were in attendance at the December 18th meeting, which is deferred without our notice. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's the last card.
Okay, so I will now entertain a motion to, oh, is there rebuttal time?
No rebuttal.
No rebuttal time, yeah. In that case, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing, and we will do a show of hands after we have the motion on the table. Is that correct? Wonderful.
So moved.
Properly moved and seconded. Let's get a show of hands. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Okay, commissioners, it's our time to discuss and ask questions.
I have a question. Hey, residents, can my phone glass? Could you come up? And Sarah, could you, on your slide, can you pull up the subdivisions that are surrounding this property? I want to see High Point, and I want to see where the gentleman lives.
Is this the one?
Yeah. Okay.
Our entrance is off of Old Fairburn.
Old Fairburn.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And then, since you go up Old Fairburn, the next street on your right is Thaxton, so that will be the main street of which this subdivision, this subdivision.
Okay, and your...
His street is to the left of that entrance, to that complex that would be built.
It's like right across the street.
Okay, sir, where's the entrance to this new subdivision to be in your proposal?
Mr. Allen, yeah, Mr. Allen lives in Wolf Creek Circle, which is labeled here on the map. Ms. King lives off of High Point Trail.
And your entrance is located where?
On Thaxton Road, across, it's kind of, I did my own overlay to see where it lands. It's kind of right in the middle of the two ingress/egress points of Wolf Creek Circle.
No, I want to see, also, subdivision entrance is right here.
I'm not sure that the pointer will work here.
That's okay, I'm fine. So your entrance is going to be off Thaxton?
Off Thaxton Road, so if you could see Wolf Creek Circle, it's kind of shaped like this.
Right.
It would be in the middle of those two points of access.
And 42 homes, one, same entrance and exit with an emergency gate.
That's right.
And you're proposing how many homes per acre?
2.56.
Okay, thank you, both of you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, anyone else have any questions or comments?
Just want to say, it's nice to see that the applicant really worked with the community and took what the community said to heart, and, you know, 20, 21 of the changes, they incorporated, and so that says a lot.
What's binding this, the agreement that the community has with Mr. Allen's group?
Commissioner, this is an agreement that Mr. Allen's community has drafted. I haven't had a chance to review it yet, however, this is what they would like...
Will you present it, so it's shorty?
This is what they would like for us to sign that would bind us to these conditions. Also, should...
Did you have a review of this paragraph?
I have not, no. He just made me aware of this agreement. Should this application be approved by the city council? We would seek to incorporate these conditions into the rezoning, so that they would be, they would run with the land, so that, you know, if my client is no longer able to develop this property, the next developer would still have to abide by those conditions. So this may bind my client, but incorporating them into the zoning binds any future developers as well.
So you're saying you do agree to all of that, and you are really signing that agreement?
Yes, yeah, yeah, so I have to give this to my client to make sure they're good with it, but they have told me that they are good with these conditions, and if this says we agree to those, then we're good to go.
Okay, and how many acres of AG1 land is being rezoned? I know that part of it's already CUP.
So part of it is subsea and part of it is AG1.
Okay.
We're seeking to rezone the entire thing, however, I don't know how much of it is AG1. I could try to get that for you. I would need to talk to my engineer to see if they have that surveyed out.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to just double back, because this is slightly slippery, a little slow. If we approve it, and they go back and they don't want to agree with what the community wanted, or the residents wanted, then where are we with that? Then you move on, and that's not what they agreed to. So I ask the question, I go back to, because reading is fundamental, what binds this agreement?
So let me make sure I understand.
You need to defer.
I don't, I don't think I need a deferral. I'm here tonight to tell you that my client has agreed to these conditions, and they're willing to do this. I was just given it this evening. But what's going to bind us and future developers to those conditions, in addition to this, is the zoning. When it's approved, we will make it law. It'll be, so the way, the same way the map is updated and the plan is approved, these conditions will attach to it. So if my client or any developer wants to build that plan, they got to meet those conditions. And then the city, yeah, and we do, we do, and what will happen is the council members will say, "We're not going to approve this unless you agree," and we'll tell them we agree. They'll codify it in law, and we will be, we'll have to abide by them unless, or, excuse me, code enforcement could come after us if we don't.
Okay, thank you.
You got a question for staff? Is that correct, that if, in the rezoning, you could put specific commissions, conditions in the zoning that is going to survive the applicant?
Yes.
I have a question.
Quickly just add to that, that we do have the option of approving with conditions, and then I'll move it on to Commissioner Devon.
I want to ask, and maybe I didn't hear what I think I heard. Did you say that your client has read all of this and agree with all of these changes?
Yes, they have.
Okay, and the only thing that they have not read is the agreement that you just received.
That's right, yeah. So I was just made aware of this this evening at this meeting. I just need to take this to them and say, this will, this is an agreement between my client and the community. This is in addition to the rezoning conditions. I am going to advise, after I've reviewed this, I will likely advise that they can sign this.
Could I please read what this is saying to this body?
Chair? Chair?
What says he's...
Oh, you're good. What I was just going to say was, was that I think the agreement is great, but regardless of the fact, if this is approved tonight with conditions, that's what it is, and it's going to go to council, and they have to have the final approval. So just making sure that if we're in agreeance with it, we're making sure that, whether they have the binding agreement or not, that we have the 20, the 21 changes on this document go with the approval tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, shall I read? Mr. Allen, could you read the document?
Developer agrees that it will enter into a written agreement with the Old Fairburn community and adjacent landowners residing in single-family residences on said adjacent land at 3880 Thaxton Road, City of South Fulton, Georgia 30331. In the event that developer is not the owner of this fee simple of the property, then the developer will also obtain execution of the agreement by the owner of the property, period. Agreement to be in writing, approved by, and agreed between both parties filed within records of City of South Fulton, City Council, as part of the public record for inclusion as zoning conditions for this development and for binding purposes in the landowner, on the landowner and developer. Its successors, transfers, and assigns, in being secreted.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, I have one more question, but I want to give it to you first. Does anyone else have any other questions? Have you, I have a question for the applicant. Have you done environmental impact studies? Are there any wetlands or streams going through the property? Could you speak to that?
There is a stream on the property, and per state law, there's the required stream buffer, in this case, 75 feet from top of bank out. We are avoiding development in that area entirely. We're not seeking any variances or anything like that from the stream buffer, so we are seeking to stay away from the stream as much as possible, so that it can be maintained and protected. Otherwise, other than that, I'm not aware of any other environmental assets on the site.
Thank you.
Of course.
Shall we move forward with the vote, commissioners? Everyone feel ready? Okay, I'll now entertain a motion to approve staff's findings of fact.
So moved. Seconded.
Second.
Properly moved. Oh, yeah, go for it.
Sorry, we're going to call a rule instead. Commissioner Perry? Commissioner Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Bailey?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
Commissioner Boone?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. I will now entertain a motion to approve, deny, or defer this case.
I move that we approve Z twenty-four zero two seven with the twenty-one neighborhood conditions included.
Excuse me, Chair. Before we second on that, it was twenty out of twenty-one, not twenty-one.
Commissioner Perry, I, I can't speak. Oh, here we go.
Sorry, there are two on, we can't turn it on. Commissioner Perry, did you get that?
So I think in, in our list, there's twenty-one. I think they, they submitted more on their side than, than he did submit. Ours, there's twenty-one listed in the proposal.
It was originally twenty-three and they got it down to twenty-one. And the community accepted that.
Should we make mention of the contract too?
We can't add that, that's a private separate agreement. Not because we're incorporating them as conditions. Yeah.
So these are in the staff report, so this is not an agreement between, that the second, these are their, these are their requests.
Yeah, the separate document that he signed out with that was mentioned with signatures is separate. The, the conditions that he passed out are included in the staff report.
Point of clarity does have a lot of signatures in line for the city.
Okay, you're complete with your motion? Okay, good. Then we're looking for a second. Can you restate the motion for the record, please? Commissioner Perry? Chair. We'll get a discussion after we have the motion on the table.
May I be recognized?
Chair?
Yes.
Okay. I think that the motion, I'm not voting, but I think that the motion needs to be a little bit more specific because you were ju, we were just provided this document tonight. So I think you should, if you, whoever throws the motion should say that they're approving the proposed amendments to the development plan for the zoning application at three three eight zero Thaxton Road on the document that was provided on December seventeenth at this planning commission meeting.
I like it, okay.
Just to be, just to be more clear, because you could say, we propose, I mean, we approved amendments, but what amendments are you talking about? We're talking about the ones that we're giving on a three-page document tonight, just to be specific for clarity.
Commissioner Perry, are you willing to do the motion again with all the specifics so we can have it for the record? We are so appreciative of you.
So, okay. So I'm making a motion that we approve Z twenty-four zero two seven thirty-eight eighty Thax, Thaxton Road incorporating the twenty-one conditions listed in the staff report provided on January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five? Second.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Staff, could you please call the rule?
Commissioner Perry?
Aye.
Commissioner Reverend Shannon Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Bailey?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
I'm sorry, I have not had a chance to check to make sure that these things coincide with each other. Since you restated, instead of the attachment, you're saying that it's stated in the package. Is that what we're voting on?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm, I'm saying approval, approval of, of the proposal with the twenty-one conditions that's listed in the staff report. So it's like on the fifth page that listed out.
So I'm not...
Aye. And Commissioner Boone?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay, we will now move on to item four, case Z twenty-four dash zero two nine, an application by Chipt, Atlanta Buffington LLC, looking to rezone from Office Institutional District to M1. And with that, I will pass it off to Mr. Williams.
Z twenty-four dash zero two nine, along with the concurrent variance, Z E twenty-four dash zero one one, the address is thirty-six hundred Buffett Center Place. The applicant is requesting their rezoning from O and I, which is our Office Institutional District, to M1, which is our Light Industrial District, to develop an eighty thousand square foot light industrial space with a concurrent variance from section four zero five dot zero one to reduce the eastern bounding buffer from one hundred feet to fifty feet at thirty-six hundred Buffington Center. Staff is recommending conditional approval. That condition is based on the elimination of the concurrent variance because we found out that does not need it.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So move. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Let's have a show of hands.
It passes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Henry Bailey, counsel for the applicant, excuse me. And my address is thirty-three forty-three Peachtree, Peachtree Road Northeast, Atlanta, Georgia, Morehouse, excuse me, Morris Manning and Martin. Apologies. A long night. But at, at, at any rate, so as stated by staff, can you go full screen on, on this?
Sadly, I think this is the biggest. I can get it.
Okay, that's fine. Are you all able to see it reasonably well? Okay. So again, this, this request is to rezone the property located at thirty-six hundred Buffington Center Place from O and I to Light Industrial. What you see on the screen here is a representative example or, or elevation of what the building will look like upon completion, once it's, once it's developed, something to, akin to this. So this is an aerial of the site generally showing where the building, where the, where the property is located relative to other landmarks in the area. As you can see, Hartswich Jackson International Airport is there. The property is located at the red square, which is accessible from Buffington Road and Buffington Center Place at that intersection. And I'll note to you later on how Buffington, Buffington Road is being expanded. And so, next slide, here is that just a little bit more closely, shown a little more closely. Again, the project site is located off of Buffington Center Place, adjacent to, adjacent to industrial property to its west and adjacent to industrial property all along Buffington Center Place out to the intersection with Buffington Road. And so, again, the property is on O and I, and the zoning map shows the M1 property located in an adjacent jurisdiction, which is College Park, and then the industrial property is located along Buffington Center Place, and then the agricultural property located to the east and to the north. And we'll touch point on that in, in a second regarding the buffering. So the future land use map is industrial for this property. And that's an important thing to note simply because this property was previously zoned industrial. And I'll get to that on the next slide in more detail, but the property was previously zoned industrial and then rezoned to O and I to accommodate a development that could not be developed. And so the, the, the issue now is to revert the property back to its original zoning. So not attempting a new zoning or anything along those lines, but to revert the property back to the zoning that was originally on the property, which is consistent with the future land use map as shown above. So let's get into a little bit of the site plan. As noted at the outset, staff is recommending approval with conditions, with the condition being that we eliminate the concurrent variance requests. We have eliminated that current variance request. And whatever we need to do to officially effectuate that, we're happy to oblige. So if you, you'll notice that the only access point to this eighty thousand square foot warehouse is off of Buffington Center Place as shown by the red line on the site plan. Adjacent to the agricultural property to its east is both a fifty-foot natural and planted buffer in addition to a ten-foot landscape strip for improvements. And so we're compliant with the requirements of the code, the developments standards of the code, the landscaping and buffering requirements. Again, the only access to this property will be off of Buffington Center Place in the area that is shown. And in addition to the landscaping along the northern portion of the property near Gwendolyn Drive, we're also adding a six-foot tall wooden fence to increase the, the buffering, to increase the ability, or to, excuse me, to eliminate the ability nearly for the adjacent properties to the north to be able to see onto the property. And so a note on this additionally is that we had a public participation meeting on December fourth, right after the Thanksgiving holiday that we held on Zoom. It was very well attended. We had a lively discussion. And the majority of the comments that we got in that meeting were about where exactly is this located? What exactly is the, is, is the property? What's being proposed here? We were able to answer those questions to what we believe was a sufficient understanding based on the comments that we got from, from, from the folks in attendance. And we provided a public participation report to that end. So the next thing is this sort of timeline. I want to give you this timeline just because I think it's important. I, I was going to reiterate what I said earlier, that this property was originally zoned light industrial in Fulton County before two thousand seventeen, long before two thousand seventeen. And in two thousand seventeen, it was rezoned to O and I for a commercial development, which fell through and went back to the lender in two thousand nineteen. From two thousand nineteen on to two thousand twenty-two, my client, the applicant, then brought the property and repaid the entire Buffington Center Drive. So Buffington Center Drive, where the property is, the only place the property is accessible from, from, from that property to Buffington Road, was repaid by my client, the applicant, at its own cost. And then in two thousand twenty-four, we received a zoning verification letter showing that the property was, was zoned M1, when in fact, it was actually zoned O and I. And we then had conversations with the city about how do we resolve the discrepancy here? And the only resolution to that was to come and request their rezoning to revert it back to its original industrial zoning from pre-two thousand seventeen. And so that's why we're here. And again, that is consistent with the future land use map designation of industrial on this property. And just one last note on, on this, that I should, that I should mention from our conversations with the public participation meeting was that how much new traffic is going to be generated by this site from a truck standpoint? And we ran a trip generation report on this, and the answer is two trucks. Because of the size of the site being, the size of the building being roughly eighty thousand square feet, not expected to generate a lot of traffic at all. Truck traffic from that standpoint will be two trucks during peak traffic, during peak hours in the AM and the PM. And with that, I'll step aside and reserve the remainder of my time.
Thank you. Do we have any cards for against this case?
We have two cards against.
Okay, let's move on to that.
So the first card is for Alvin Reynolds.
Come on up, Mr. Reynolds.
Alvin Reynolds, five eighty-five, Kings Place, Riverdale, Georgia. I reside in District Seven. Really, all my questions have been answered, you know? Because I was very concerned about the buffers. They addressed that. That was, that was on the top of my list. The traffic, that has been addressed too, and the area basically is zone industrial. So guess I should have put a card for, for it, I guess. You know, so, but yeah, again, all of the questions were answered during the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next card is for Michael Venable.
This is Michael Venable, District Six. You know, back in the day when I was trying to buy a house, get established, they said, okay, you know, your future looks good. You, you know, when you get another ten, fifteen years, you know, you'd be straight. That wasn't necessarily true. So let's distinguish between when we talk about the future land use plan and what it is right now. If you go to your packet and look at page ten, you'll see that these things are zoned O and I. Pull out your phone, pull up Gwendolyn Drive, you can see the residents on that property. The land use was to be properly set up so that there was a buffering system. You know, if you had industrial, there should have been something in between that, that you had some space to make it clean. And this is what it was, O and I. This is the same thing as the previous case. We are putting these things right next to people. And you're talking about, nothing to do with necessary property, but it's doing, talking about quality of life. It's talking about whether you're going to be happy there. You, you know, this is, it, it just goes against basic principles of not only zoning, but when we talk about the city's purpose of, you know, making everything good for residents and everything in here, just to make it happy. I mean, this is, this is not made up, you know? Tell me, you know, years ago, yeah, you could make a lot of money in another ten, fifteen years. Well, you know, you could and you probably couldn't. Bear on caution. So let's not get confused when we talk about future land use plan. I'm talking about what it is right now and what exists here right now. This, I think, is problematic because it is too close to where residents live. If you go Google and look at the beginning of Buffington and Buffington Center Place, the big sign, it's a business park, an office park. Sign says it. It doesn't say it's an industrial park. So I mean, we're just flipping everything in the midst of something. And then, okay, you know, throw up and whatever the chips lie, they lie. I, I, I just think this is not a good idea. It's not thought out properly. If you look at the road, it is very small. You even have, you know, parking along the street, you know, perpendicular for some of the, the buildings there. I, I, this is, this is, this, this is an issue just from a quality of life standpoint. And do not think that we should be going down this track. I mean, it's, it, it's bad enough that, you know, we've got something in here that we all thought was not appropriate for this city, and now we're just banging it in. And you'll see, it's only in one area of the city, the south side of it. I've incurred that, that, that we need to nod this one.
Okay, thank you. That's it for our comment cards? We have some rebuttal time?
Yes, we have three minutes and twenty-two seconds.
Okay.
Thank you. Again, my name is Henry.
Wait for the clock to...
My apologies. I got excited. I'm sorry about that. We good now? Thank you. Again, my name is Henry Bailey, and I appreciate the comments, again, from the two gentlemen in the back, especially Mr. Venables. I just want to point out to his, this point on the future land use map versus the zoning, right? So the future land use map is a part of the comprehensive plan. You got a very extensive presentation about that tonight at the outset of this meeting. And the comprehensive planning document and the future land use map that is a part of the comprehensive planning document is a policy guide for future development, excuse me. And our property, this property, was zoned industrial from the outset. It was changed to something not industrial. The industrial character area of the future land use map designation has remained the same. All, reiterating the request... All, reiterating the request, all we're doing is asking to return it to its original zoning. Now, I should also point out with respect to distances from the residential, just from a property line standpoint to the actual building on the property, we're talking about three hundred and sixty-eight feet from the building on our property, the closest point of the building on our property to the residential property line. From any improvements at all, in this case being the asphalt of the drive to access the building, it's two hundred feet away from the residential property line with extensive vegetative buffering, extensive buffering, which is provided for by the City of South Fulton zoning code that we're complying with, again, not requesting any concurrent variance in this regard, in this regard. So while we understand and hear, uh, Mr. Venables', uh, of, hi- his, his comments, uh, we simply disagree. This, this property, this property is, has a future land use designation of industrial, um, and the request is to return it from a zoning standpoint to the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I will now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Properly moved and seconded. Um, can we see a show of hands?
All right, passed.
Okay, great. Um, okay, commissioners, let's discuss.
Can you hear me? Conrad Hilton, Jr., Michael Wildin, Mike Todd, Eddie Fisher, Richard Burton, Senator John Warner, Larry Fortin, Fortin Sky. These are all the husbands of Elizabeth Taylor. And every one of them took out a marriage license and gave a vow, a death, well, every one of them except maybe the last one. The last guy probably never unpacked because she divorced him in nineteen ninety-six. But it all started back in fifty-one. Things change. And we don't want to rope ourselves into something. We just, I mean, you know, I, I, I do a little something on Sunday mornings, and it's providential that we started this meeting, because it didn't come to us in our pack, but it was put on the agenda tonight. The future land use plan for, comprehensive, uh, uh, plan for this city, land use plan for the city. I didn't know we were going to deal with that tonight, but we started off with that. He gave, uh, one, almost a one hour. We spent almost an hour on that.
A little bit more than an hour.
A little bit more than an hour? I know, because I'm missing basketball like you are. And here we are talking about, this is where we are now. So, you know, I, I think that, uh, you know, uh, sure, this is where we are now. We can put a sex shop next to a, a preschool, because it's zoned for it, and staff approved it, or didn't approve it. I'm not beating up on staff, but I'm just saying. Let's really look at this, let's drive around our city, let's drive around the whole city, and let's drive around some other cities, some of the cities where some of these developers and lawyers come from into our city. Let's go to their city.
Yep.
And drive around. And let's make the argument, well, we'd like to put a warehouse right here on Far Road. That's all I got to say. I'm just talking tonight, because we got to be here.
Thank you, Commissioner Reverend Shannon Jones. Anyone else have a comment, a short speech, or a question? No comments, commissioners? My only comment is that it is already zoned for, um, office industrial and where it's not agricultural land to be protected, and it does seem like a lot of measures have been taken. I'm going to pass it off to the commissioners, though, if there's anything else you all would like to share or ask. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve staff's findings and fact.
So move.
Properly moved and seconded, can, could you please call the vote?
Yes, um, Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Reverend Shannon Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Bailey.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Boone.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay, I will now entertain a motion to approve, deny, or defer this case.
I move to deny case Z two four dash zero two nine slash CB two four dash zero one one, colon, three, thirty-six hundred Buffington Center Place. Um, I move to deny it. Is that enough, according to today?
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion, commissioners, before we call the vote? Okay, could you please call the vote?
Commissioner Perry.
Turn off the mic. We'll get it eventually.
Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Bailey.
Nay.
Commissioner Devon. Commissioner Boone.
Yes. And it was to approve, to deny, approve, uh, to, to deny it.
It means that you don't want this warehouse.
Exactly.
Right. Denies it.
Okay.
Corrections. Correction. What did I vote for?
Well, the motion has failed, so we do get to begin again. We get a whole new chance. Okay, yes, exactly. So the motion failed, so we'll do the motion again, and then everyone will vote as they feel compelled to vote. Okay, wonderful. I will now entertain another motion.
Excuse me, Chair. May I have, uh, I, I'm not sure what the disturbance is in the universe tonight, but I'm having a difficult time understanding how we're wording, um, motions at this point. Now, what my motion intended was for, I was hoping, uh, to deny approval. Does that make sense, to deny approval?
Did everyone get that when you voted? Okay.
Perhaps if you use the language move to recommend denial, then everyone will understand that you, you're saying that this is the recommenda- that you're saying aye to making that recommendation, and the language in, in your minds will make more sense.
Go ahead, yes, go ahead.
Okay, I recommend to deny case Z twenty-four dash zero two nine slash CB twenty-four dash zero one one, thirty-six hundred Buffington Center Place.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Could you please call the vote?
Commissioner Perry. Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Bailey.
Nay.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Boone.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We'll now move on to new business. Item one is case Z twenty-four dash zero three two, an application by WB Companies LLC to rezone from AG one to mixed use. And I'll pass that off to staff.
All right, applicant is rezoning from AG one to R four at seven nine nine five Spence Road to develop an eight hundred and forty-two unit apartment community with two thousand square feet of community space on approximately forty-two acres. The applicant also requests four concurrent variances to decrease the parking ratio to one point five parking spaces per one unit, reduce the number of electric vehicle spaces to ten, reduce the zoning buffer west and south side of the property to fifty feet, and to decrease the number of landscape islands and parking lots to every forty spaces. Staff recommends denial.
I move that we open up public, the public hearing.
Properly moved and seconded, let's have a show of hands. The ayes have it.
Can you present?
Is the applicant present? Okay, yes, come forward.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Robert Weinstein with WB Property Group. Um, okay, great. So we've been working a long time, um, with this site. We're looking for a site in Georgia for about the last four years. Uh, I own and run a, a third generation, uh, development company. We build best-in-class apartment communities, and I'm excited to share this with you tonight. We've iterated this maybe twenty times, and hopefully this is one that we can all be proud of. So our development is located on Spence Road, seven nine nine five Spence. Um, you can see a, a little bit of the, uh, site plan here. Uh, this is the rezon case from AG one and single family to MIX, which is mixed use. Oh, and we had our, um, community meeting last week. Uh, so the site is forty-three acres. It's called Atlas Green. Um, in terms of our team members, we have, uh, my company, which is family-owned and operated, uh, we have Everland Associates, uh, we also have Pool &amp; Pool Architects and A and R Engineering, who did our traffic study. Uh, part of why we've been iterating this for so long is because this had to go to the Architectural Review Board as well as, um, Greta, because it's a substantially large project. So the city of South Fulton, a city on the rise. Um, so, you know, Atlas Green would be best-in-class apartment community, uh, with exclusive and high-end amenities as well as having commercial space. Um, so the luxury amenities include gyms, pools, lounges, cabanas. Uh, we really like community to get together and, you know, live together, work together, play together, um, and we provide those best-in-class amenities. So we also have a convenience store, which is that commercial space on site. Um, there's two thousand feet of commercial, uh, for the residents. In addition, we believe in safety first, so we have an officer next door program where we subsidize, uh, two units per phase for officers. Uh, what that does is, you know, accidents do happen, crime does happen, but it can get addressed really quickly. And, you know, depending on the municipality, some municipalities allow officers to bring home their cop car. It, it helps deter people, um, from doing things and keeping people on their best behavior. Um, also, those officers will coordinate with our leasing staff, and, um, when something does happen, they handle it pretty quickly. Uh, so this is the, the current zoning is AG one and single family. The proposed zoning is MIX. This is our beautiful site. So Highway ninety-two is on right-hand side where Spence Road, we're right across from, uh, a, a large warehouse and US Foods. Um, a few things just to take into account, and this may not show up. So on the northern par- portion of the site, there are power lines that run through there and give or take ten acres of just straight power lines overhead. It's just north of that pond, the retention pond. Um, to the north of that, we have two multifamily, uh, projects that were built, uh, I think in the eighties, give or take. Um, and so, you know, this area does have multifamily in it, does have some commercial, and we do have some hardships on site to deal with. So this just highlights those two, uh, multifamily apartment houses, Orchard Springs and the Park at Oakley. Um, yeah. Moving forward, this is some of the inspiration that we've, uh, used in the past in terms of, uh, our other communities. We, we have WeWork-style offices in the clubhouse. We also have, you know, resort-style pools, really nice gyms. We try and elevate the level of design, and we try and build something that communities will be proud of and is more modern. Uh, we hold for the longer term. Our family's owned property for eighty years and hasn't sold it. Um, so we want to, we'll, we spend more in terms of materials because we know we're going to own it for the longer term, and we don't want to have to deal with a lot of those headaches that comes with corner cutting. So unit amenities, you know, we're talking about granite and quartz countertops, not laminate, not veneer, um, energy-efficient thermostats. I heard that was important to someone. I agree. Building efficiently and, and, uh, we are Energy Star rated, uh, at seventy or greater. Walk-in showers, full tile and stone backsplash, stainless steel appliances, wood-style flooring, um, washer-dries in every unit. You know, this is, is truly luxury. Uh, community amenities, walking trail, uh, playground, there's a, a dog park, wellness center, um, mail and package room, lots of packages now. I heard people talking about warehouses before. Um, we also will do communal gardens, um, barbecue areas, patio areas. It's really highly amenitized. This is kind of like the communal garden, does bring communities together. Um, it's an, it's a very, like, interesting, uh, feature. We spoke to, you know, a bunch of the councilmen, council members individually and asked, you know, what they would like to see in this community. Ultimately, you know, we want everyone's input. We want to make sure this is something you want. We don't want to build something you don't want. It was also important to have, like, a small arts and crafts room, so we incorporated that. Yoga is important, pickleball as well, and a place for the kids. You know, the kids was brought up multiple times, and, um, I think that's important as well. Some people like to do live work. This is a place for the kids to go. Uh, these are some photos that some of the council members thought, uh, were best-in-class. Uh, the, the general sentiment was more modern. We like modern. Uh, we, we don't like more traditional. I see, you know, both of them do well, it just depends on the, the area. Uh, but modern and things that are timeless was, was stressed. This is our site plan. So there's eight hundred and forty-two units spread across, um, eight buildings, and it's a phased project. So you can see, and it's hard to point on here, but you can see the pond in the middle over there. That area is not being touched. The area in the middle, um, between the, the east phase and the west phase, all of that in there, um, really won't be built on, except for that retention pond that you can see at the bottom of the screen. Um, and at the top, again, we, we're forced to kind of put the parking there because of the fact that there are power lines running through it. So this is our site plan. We think it flows really well. There are two entrances. There's one at the north and then one at the south of the site. Um, this did go through Greta. We had to, uh, put turn lanes. Um, and, uh, we did a TIA, took a lot of ti- it took all of eight months to kind of get through there, um, and they ultimately approved it. Um, let's see what else I can tell you. Okay, next slide. So this is the, the breakdown. Sorry, it's a little pixelated. Um, but eight hundred and forty-two units, um, on forty-two acres approximately. So this went, uh, we did go through the DRI Regional Review Finding. Uh, long process, lot of questions. We did make changes originally when we applied to, uh, the city. Uh, Sunday was actually here, and we started at almost eleven hundred units and really scaled down the project. Um, and that was, you know, almost a year and a half ago. Then we went to Greta. Then we went to Greta. So, we did a traffic study. They told us which intersections to examine. We examined all those intersections. And ultimately, they approved it with some conditions. The conditions, we will meet without a problem, and there aren't major improvements. So, some snapshots. These are some of the older assets that we've owned and we've cleaned up. We built this project in Knoxville, Tennessee. It's 246 units. Beautiful project. For the last seven years, it's been highlighted as one of the best projects in Knoxville to live in. We're really proud of it. Residents are extremely happy. And it's definitely something that we could see coming here. So, this is our site, just to give you an idea in terms of some of the hardships we deal with.
Okay, I'm sorry, that was the full 10 minutes.
No, we're good.
Are there any cards against this case?
Yes.
Yes, okay. How many?
We have three cards against.
Okay. I'm sorry, you're timed.
Oh, no problem. Do I just say?
Yeah, go ahead, take a seat. We'll call you up for questions as needed. Thank you.
No problem.
And now, we'll move on to our against cards.
Our first card is from Naima Gilier.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Naima Gilier. I live in District 4, but I live in the city of South Fulton. So, I'm concerned about anything that comes through that relates to zoning. And this one, I call, this project I call "The Project of Variances." Zoning is AG. They want to change it to mixed-use. But, mixed-use is not in the suburban section. I mean, mixed-use is not in the neighbor, in the comp plan, in the, you know what I'm trying to say, in the comp plan. So, that's an issue, because it doesn't agree with that. Not only does it not agree with it, but the Atlanta Regional Commission that did the review of it says that it is incompatible with the density. So, it's 845 apartments that would be there. And I'm kind of glad that the one that was submitted first with the fire escapes on the outside, that they pulled that one, because that was the original look, the architectural look of what it was going to be like. But, that wasn't in any of the pictures that we saw tonight. So, I don't know if that's been pulled to the side, or if that's going to be, or whatever. But, at any rate, it does not agree with the look of the entire area. It does not agree with the suburban, suburban look of the area. And of course, ARC denied it anyway. There are just too many variances. They want to change the buffer that's next to the city of Fairburn. And the buffer between the two cities is supposed to be 100. They want to reduce it to 50. They want to even reduce the landscape islands that would, you know, make it look really nice. And all of this, I'm assuming, is to be able to push in the 845 apartments that will be there, and the parking. One and a half parking spots for 845 people. So, I don't know how that's going to work out. And I don't know how 845 people are going to work on Spence Road, especially if you are on Spence Road and a train comes through, you're in trouble, because you're going to be sitting there for way over an hour. But, there's nothing in here about a traffic study, in any details about a traffic study. So, I recommend that this be completely and totally denied, unless the developer decides to build it such that it agrees with the suburban neighborhood part of the comp plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Drew DeMan.
Come on up, Mr. DeMan.
All right. Can you hear me, everybody? All right, good evening. Thank you very much. I am Drew DeMan. I live in District 7, about a mile down Spence Road in the Fife community, a historical agricultural community with a lot of intact farms, functional farms, and green space. And we had a meeting with Mr. Weinstein last week, and of the handful of people that showed up, everybody presented extreme concerns about traffic. Also, people who did not show up but are residents in the area who I talked to afterwards all had something to say about traffic. My main concerns with the development are really conservation-oriented, relating to the buffers that Alvin discussed earlier. I think this is a city-wide issue. We need to be really putting our foot down and not doing these giveaways of 50 feet here and 75 feet there, or however much people ask for, because when they take that buffer from 100 feet to 50 feet, they're taking that 50 feet from us, from the residents that's there to protect us. And I appreciate having that protection in place. As it happens, the area around this proposed development is getting denser and denser. The residents of these proposed apartments would live across the street from a couple of warehouses. They would live just up the hill from a waste handler who's had escapes of toxic airborne vapors before in the past. Clean Earth, it's called. You may have seen it driving down Spence Road. That Clean Earth place is a known polluter. They've got millions of dollars' worth of cases against them around the country. And then, of course, as you get closer to Oakley Industrial, we've got more density that's been built along 74 Sonoya Road. We've got more density that's been built in the last two years. I don't even know how many of those places are full. Do we need more apartments now? Or can we maybe hang on until we come up with a better plan? So, I think that we need all the buffers we can get. I think we need all of the woodland areas we can get in general around the city. If you pull out from this plan and look at the warehouse, and warehouse, and warehouse, and warehouse here, and the highway and the subdivision there, and all the stuff, we're starting to see less and less green. And as we all know, those trees are here to help us breathe and live our lives. And the more of that stuff we cut down and get rid of, it doesn't grow back, especially when you pave it. So, I was, you know, I would like to see the kind of development that I can get behind and say, wow, this is a great development, please vote for it. But, I'm afraid I can't at this point. And much like Ms. Gilier had mentioned, you know, this is like the variance fest here, you know, requesting four concurrent variances. Decrease the parking ratio to 1.5 cars. Okay, that half-car, let's just toss the half-car. And I would love to see people drive less cars, because as we all know, cars emit toxic pollution that is warming our planet and killing our future, right? But, at the same time, we're reducing electric vehicle spaces? What? Why don't we have more electric vehicle spaces? Okay? And since we're talking about electricity, in addition to living across the street from a couple of warehouses and down the road from a toxic waste site, we want to live right next to the high-tension power lines. So, this, to me, just doesn't add up as a sweet community. This doesn't look like a great place to live, honestly. Where I live, down the road, on a farm, is pretty sweet. We're right by a train, which is an industrial noise pollutant, and I hate it. And we live a mile from a place that's had hazardous chemicals released into the air, and I hate that. But, it's the best we can do. But, I think that, you know, the more incursions we have like this in an area like Fife, you know, you're taking something away from us. So, I would highly recommend that you deny this, and maybe we can come up with something better. Thank you.
And our last one is Alvin Reynolds.
Thank you again, Alvin Reynolds. I reside in District 7, 585 Kings Place. And I have to concur with my colleagues, as they spoke so eloquently about the development of this apartment complex. And all along in that area, we are building more apartments, townhomes, you know, all up and down that street. This is environmentally challenged, and this site also didn't even address the 2,000 square feet of commercial space. And you got to bring, have 10 parking spaces for that. That wasn't addressed. You said 800-plus home, apartments going to be built. You need to multiply that by at least two. So, that's going to be added traffic and so forth. So, we have to start to ask ourselves, what are we doing? What is it that we, we say we're a city on the rise? How are we rising with these types of developments consistently? We're going to find ourselves landlocked, to where we're not going to be able to develop anything else. And we have got to start to deal with these variances issues. These are so many variances that it makes your head swim. You know, we have to start to focus on this stuff, and that, I started out with this earlier. You're going to see them come up more and more, and time and time again. And we cannot read our buffers. We can't deplete them. They're there for reason. And we need to make sure that we keep these things in place and intact. Now, if a development project cannot adhere to those buffers as to where they are, then thank you very much. Please deny.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Okay, so, we are out of time for the public hearing, so I will now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, can we see a show of hands?
And the motion passed.
Okay, great. Let's discuss, Commissioners. We do have to discuss this. I'll begin, unless someone else has something pressing. The toxic waste transfer site, that is maybe half a mile at the very most from this location, released toxic gas in 2008, and children were bleeding out of their eyes. And our community had a silent summer, where there were no birds and no bugs. And this company, Clean Earth, has a horrendous track record. I live two miles from it, and we have air filters all over my house. And I take lots of precautions, because I know that we are exposed to things, undeniably. It's also close to a factory, that no one mentioned. The factory's not very far away. So, I'm looking at this, and I think it looks great. I love the garden. I love the urban aesthetic. I really do. I think it's a really high-quality product, but I think the location is just not healthy for humans. And I, and yeah, so I'll pass that off to the rest of the Commissioners. Okay, no further discussion? We will move forward. We will, I'll now entertain a motion to approve staff's findings of fact.
So, move.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, staff, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Bailey.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Boone.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. I will now move on to entertain a motion to approve or deny or defer this case.
I move that we deny Z24032, CV24-013.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, staff, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Bailey.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Boone.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We'll now move on to our last case.
Thank you.
Not a case. There we go.
The final item is a text amendment. As a reminder, amendments to our zoning ordinance do have to go through the same zoning procedures requirements as rezonings. And so, that is why this is before you. This is an amendment presented by staff to our public participation requirements. This amendment would change our public participation plan requirements, so that when an applicant presents their public participation plan, they have to include the time, date, and location of any public participation meeting at the time of the presentation of their, of their public participation plan. They're also going to be required to send a copy of their letter of intent, including the site plan, the time, date, and location of their public participation meeting, to all members of the City of South Fulton City Council via email. And that notice is going to be required to be sent a minimum of 30 days prior to the public participation meeting. And finally, it's going to add a requirement that the notification of their public participation meeting be sent via first-class mail a minimum of 30 days prior to the scheduled meeting, and it must contain the meeting time, date, and location. I believe we're also moving forward, going to be requiring that public, that public participation meetings be held in person. We're no longer going to be allowing virtual meetings. And so, with that...
Okay, thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to... Yes, go.
There's no virtual component anymore?
That is correct.
And that the notice has to go out 30 days prior, and it has to say the time, the date, and the location.
That's correct.
Is there anything else that needs to be...
Oh, sorry.
I'm just wondering, is that enough?
No, I hear you, I hear you.
Hello?
Go ahead, get my own. Oh.
Time, date, place, day, time, and place.
If I could make a suggestion, can we do the public hearing first, and then you all can deliberate?
Okay, I will entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So, move.
Okay, any seconds for that? Yes, wonderful. Properly moved and seconded by Commissioner Devon. And now, let's see, a show of hands. Wonderful. Here we are. Okay.
I want to ask...
I'm sorry, are there, it's late, and I'm losing my mind, but are there any cards for or against this?
There is one card against.
Okay, let's go ahead and hear that. And then, we'll have discussion when we close the public hearing. Okay.
And it's for Storm Mitchell.
I don't know. Can she add a card? Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Charles Mitchell, District 4. Want to bring to your attention that the founding leaders of this city, one of their principal desires and concerns was about having, ability to have more local influence over our zoning matters that impacted our property values, our quality of life, and our safety. And frankly, I wasn't exactly sure what this amendment was going to be, but as you can see, I'm actually more in support of it. So, I should have been a yellow card rather than an orange card. But, thank you, staff, for bringing this forward, because I think it's important for the community involvement. We need to have some impact and influence over what we're going to be living next door to. So, I ask for your consideration to approve this. Thank you very much. Also, a quick side note, early in 2000, the Cliftondale community developed a, actually, we hired an attorney to come up with a community developer agreement, very similar to what Mr. Allen produced. And its specific language in there... And its specific language in there as far as the level of development, additional requirements and so forth, and it was typically used to get the community's approval to stand up in front of the commission to say, we would approve with these conditions. Those conditions were typically spread upon the minutes of the rezoning minutes for those cases. So it does have precedent. So just to call that to your attention, and again, thank you for your time, and I know it's late, and again, I'm really more of in support of this for community involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have one more. Possibly two. Okay.
Michael Venable, District Six. I kinda wanted to respond to Reverend Jones's concerns. There needs to be a proximity area for any public meeting. For Delph, I'm not going to Alpharetta to a developer's office to have a public meeting for something that's on Welcome Out Road. So I think wherever the developer is or the development is proposed to be, there needs to be some kind of proximity range to that so that, you know, no one is spending two or three hours to, to run through, to, 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 to get to that. And just wanted to piggyback on, on Storm's thing. Yes, you know, unfortunately, I don't believe our council has been familiar with community agreements and things that come about in there because, you know, this was a standard thing, you know, in Fulton County with the Commissioners, and they were very familiar and were very supportive of that. So yeah, that's something that needs to come in place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening again, Kimberly King, District Two. And I too had no plans to be here this late, but it compares Faber Bigfoot last night, where they were here till twelve twenty. But I circled a few things that I'm really seeking clarification in the notice, and I'm not sure how to get this from the staff, but well, before I forget, I do wanna mention, Storm mentioned the Cliftondale agreement that was put in place some twenty years ago. If you guys do not know, encourage staff and the commission to reach out and get to know Mr. Harold Reed. He was kinda the author of that, and he's, you know, long-term resident of Cliftondale. His wife just passed away, otherwise he probably would've been here tonight. But he really was the author in to make sure that we had really good participation when I first moved here, you know. He was just, he was a giant, I think, in that, from a knowledge base and everything else. But my comments, when we talk about, we see a lot that the target area for public participation, the plan, the meeting place are all gonna be approved by the Community Development and Regulatory Affairs Director. I do have concerns. I'm just not sure if the staff is as familiar with the community as possible. If we look at public facilities, a place like a Welcome Out Park, they close at seven. Most of us, if you work outside of your home trying to get back to this side of town, you're not home before six-thirty, so we need to make sure that whoever the developers are or the public participation plans, that we have facilities, maybe it's this one, that can be open beyond a certain time. That's just something that I hope that we can take into account. The other thing I would ask for clarification on is, they ask about a letter of intent, typical things to be sent via mail and then via email. Mail, the mail in Fulton County is a challenge, so I'm wondering if that thirty-day window is sufficient? Because for me to get something, I'm not, and I'm sure like most of the people here, I'm not an unbusy person. So when I get a notice that same week, I wanna attend, but I may not be able to, so I'm just wondering if that thirty-day window should be addressed to really reflect current lifestyles, that a lot of us book things out, et cetera, so that we can be an active and engaged community. But those are really my concerns, and it's not a complaint, but just, I'm not sure, they're not addressed as the way it's written, and I hope that they could be incorporated in a way that reflects the community's preferred engagement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pen, oh, thank you.
And I think we have one more.
Good evening, Drew Demann, District Seven. I was, you know, had not seen this, looked over it. I like the idea of it. I have some questions, and I think it would just be good to know, in terms of the proximity of people who would be affected and are therefore invited to meetings to discuss projects. It says five thousand two hundred and eighty feet, which is a mile. Does that mean that only people within a mile are going to be invited to the input meetings? I would think that that's a little more restrictive than maybe it should be. And then the other thing is that Item Two describes a process in which the developer holds a meeting and then presents a summary of what the input was from the community. And I just wonder if the developer is the best arbiter of what the summary of the community input looked like, and that if there shouldn't be someone from staff present to very transparently and without any, you know, particular agenda, represent what was said and spoken in the meeting as opposed to someone who might have a compromised agenda. That's all.
Thank you.
Real quick, Albert Reynolds, again, look, I wanted to touch, touch bases too with my colleagues, once again, talk about the proximity of the meetings. We really need to make sure that these meetings are held in an appropriate area. And not only that, when Mr. Demann talked about the mile radius, we get a lot of calls, and I know I do, I'm sure my colleagues do as well, from people outside our districts with help with the zoning cases and so forth. And this mile radius is very restrictive. And so if we're gonna be a city on the rise, one voice, one city, and not seven different cities, seven different cities, you know what I mean? You know, we should be, have public participation throughout. We shouldn't, if something is happening in District One, I'm in District Seven, I should be allowed to speak on it. You know, I think that's very important, you know. So again, that, that notion there, and personal meetings, you know, a lot of times we do in Zoom that I know we can reach the multitude, but sometimes you really wanna speak to these developers face-to-face. You know, you wanna talk to them, you wanna be able to sit there and just look them in the eyes and, and see how we can just come to some common ground and make things work. And, you know, again, the main thing too is that the restrictions that what's happening in other districts, I mean, I live miles away from districts, right? But I get calls and emails and solicitations from people in those said districts about these cases and things like that. And so I, I think that input would be warranted, you know, across the city and not just that mile radius. I really wish we could expand that a little bit, and I understand the reason why that mile radius is put in place, but as you guys know and see who comes to these meetings. A lot of times people are not able to make those meetings, like the little young lady said, about getting there, you know? And they rely on people that actually can get there to speak for them, you know? And a lot of times, because you're not in that district, you know, they don't wanna hear from you. But we need to make some type of provisions to where everybody can be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Can we see a show of hands?
Motion passed.
Okay. All right, Commissioners.
So I, I know in, in the amendment that's already in there that you have to approve the location. I'm confident that, that Mr. McCleney is now gonna approve an Alpharetta location for meeting. And I guess maybe there is, he has his own policies of, I guess the meeting has to take place in the City of South Fulton, or is there any policy that you have on meeting location?
There's no particular policy. And in fact, meetings do not have to take place in the City of South Fulton. As you all know, with our borders being the way that they are, we are, are in very close proximity to many other municipalities, and so sometimes our, our meetings will venture, the developer meetings, I should say, will venture off into Collers Park or Faber and or some of the other cities where there are facilities that the developer will hold their meetings. And so we do try to monitor that and try to keep them as close as possible to the development site, but sometimes they do happen in other municipalities.
So I, I guess my, my only other recommendation is, I would, one, I would add to the, to the, that we should make it a requirement that, that the meeting be held in the City of South Fulton. We have enough meeting space in our city that every developer could be accommodated, but that would be more accommodating to the residents. But two, can we not just post on the website any of these participation meetings and just post them and list them so residents could go there and say, ah, there's, there's a meeting going on about this in District Two. Ah, here's the information, I'm gonna attend. That way, if I'm not within the mile, I know there's a centralized place I could go and become part of that participation meeting.
Well, what the, the first thing that we have to remember is that it's not our meeting. It's the developer meeting. It's their public participation meeting. They put it on, they choose a location. It's not a city, city meeting, it's not staff's meeting, it's their meeting with, to meet directly with the community, and we try to not get in between the developer and the community. We want you all to have direct communication with them. The intent for us to include the requirement that they have to reach out directly to city council members is that, the hope is that the city council members will utilize their direct networks to send out those developer meetings, utilizing their newsletters and their, their other forms of communication so that the citizens within their districts and within the city will have more access to those meetings and that that message will be amplified, but with also remembering that they are sending out direct notice through the mail of this developer meeting. So I, I guess the direct question, answer to your question, I always try to answer questions directly. The direct question, answer to your question is, yes, we could put the meetings on the website, but they're not city meetings.
Gotcha. It's not, it's not a city meeting, but just like the proposals and everything else, I mean, it's city business. And all, all you're doing is just posting information. You can put a disclaimer that this is not a city meeting, but as a public service, we're providing the information for you, for the citizens. Just consider it.
I understand.
Mr. McCleney, why are you still up front? I just wanted to know, if these items, these requirements that we've covered in here will be a part of your staff checking when, when the developers finish their package with you guys, or when it comes to us? Would there be any indicators on their case file that we get where they have, they've met the requirements or the requirements are just satisfied through you guys, and you guys move on?
Right. So no, there, it will be indicated in the packet that you get, so, and, and it's already indicated in the packets that you get because it's important to note that we already require that they do these meetings and that they, that they give us their public participation plan report prior to their planning commission hearing, and we put that information in the staff report. What these new regulations are gonna do is just make all of that happen earlier in the process, and so that we're, that we're getting that, that information earlier on, we're notifying the public of those meetings earlier on so that hopefully we're getting better participation in these meetings. But to answer your question, yeah, that information will be in your packet, and we will be checking to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do. Ms. Smith?
I have a quick question about, I see some language in here that says a target area for public participation should be determined by the applicant as well as yourself, or whoever's in the role at that, at that time. But then I also see another area that says that you have to approve it. So I'm just a little bit confused on the language as far as when they say a target area for public participation should be determined by the applicant and the development director and the language that says that you have to approve the actual location. It just seems like it's conflicting a little bit, so I was just wondering, are you, is the applicant in the city making the determination, or is it them just bringing it to you and then you have to approve it? Because I don't, the language, it, it may just need to be addressed.
So specifically, they have to identify all property owners within one mile of the subject property. That's within the, that's static within the law. I think the language that you're referring to is more so guidance about community organizations and community groups in, in trying to determine whether or not there are any, any specific community groups within, in the area of the development that they need to reach out to. So if they're, if they're doing development in Sandtown, we might, we might tell them specifically, you need to go talk to the Sandtown Community Organization. But the ordinance is gonna require, regardless of where they are, the ordinance is gonna require that one-mile radius, that they have to reach out to every address in that, in that vicinity.
And I see that there's a requirement, well, I guess that the city will be providing...
I'm not...
Okay. Okay. Um, there's a requirement in here, I don't know if you guys saw that or not, but there's a requirement that the city's gonna pretty much provide a list of locations in each district, so I think that kinda helps out a little bit too, as well with like some of the concerns.
This is your first meeting.
I'm sorry.
Counsel, sorry, Chair. Could you recognize me, please? Chair, Councilwoman Smith figures, can you just point out where you are in the, in the hand? I'm sorry, Commissioner. I tapped the name right there.
If you look on the second page, well, I'm sorry, the third page is front and back. At the top, it says a list of, well, it's under like the second sentence, it says a list of public participation meeting sites in each council district shall be made available to participants.
What line is that?
Um, it, on the third page at the...
On the third page, is there a number or a letter?
It's right above five. There's no, well, it's number four technically, C four.
Number four, I got it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So, given that, no, but they don't have to, they don't have to like choose that, right? He can give them a list, and they can like go to Collers Park.
Well, he's gonna have to prove it.
Right. But he said he, but he said he would.
I mean, right. If it's very close, he's saying that...
What he, what he would do is let him, let his best friend see, so we all be with him.
Keep him moving. It's a good...
Yeah, did I understand, you said we won't, we'll use Zoom anymore?
That's correct.
Why couldn't we do a combo, Zoom and in person? And then as Drew was saying, that would kind of, you know, eliminate the fact that the developer gets to be the arbiter. You know, if we, if we could do a Zoom and maybe post that to the city's website, or make that part of the application that the developer has to do in person and Zoom and provide your office with the recording. That way, we don't rely on the developer saying that, well, nobody had any problems with this, or whatever. We would have a Zoom copy to actually see what went on in the meeting.
That's certainly a suggestion that you all can make.
So, because this is running up on agenda, so that was my, that was gonna be my suggestion is that, that you, you have someone, let's say you have someone that's, you know, got a, you know, oxygen tank and can't, you know, or someone that's, has COVID or something that's, this is dear and dear to them, they wanna be a part of that, they can still participate. So I think it should be a both and, not a either or. And, and I, I see it a little different. I do see it, not to be argumentative with, with counsel, with this great lawyer here, but it's a government, other people, by the people, for the people. So this is really, we need to tell developers how to do business in South Fulton. And with that... And with that, I would suggest that a meeting wouldn't be any more than five miles from wherever this this, uh, the property is going to be. I think that it needs to be widened to at least two, uh, to to at least two miles to folks, and I think it should be forty-five days, a month and a half instead of thirty days. And that would be my suggestion. Five, two, forty-five, that's not scripture.
Uh, can I say something? Um, I just want us to also keep in mind that when we push out these days, we're also pushing out when they can come to the commission, when they can come to the ZBA, you know, when they can go to council. So keep that in mind too, of when when cities want to do business with us and they're on a timeline and they need to come to us to get different approvals for different things or denials, um, what that looks like, so, and I'm only talking about with the dates, so just keeping that in mind.
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna, um, I I I want to, um, I I do want you all to keep that in mind. Uh, when I took over this position in in February two thousand three, February sixth, two thousand three.
Who's count?
Not not that I, not that I remember specifically. Um, twen- two thousand and twenty-three, um, the the complaint that was constant in two thousand twenty-three is that it took a very long time for cases to get through for, um, our process. Um, and so in two thousand twenty-four, when, and and I can do anything about it because that calendar was, had already been created. In two thousand twenty-four, when we created our calendar, what I attempted to do was to condense a lot of the dates, um, so that we could get cases through the calendar more quickly. Uh, I might have, I I think I was a little bit, uh, too ambitious with that, um, which is fine, we're we're learning, we're growing, we're we're in, we're experiencing an uptick in development, so that's a also part of it, uh, which I think is why we're seeing, um, some of the, some of the effects of that now with the amount of deferrals that we're getting and that type of thing. So we're trying to find the sweet spot. Um, what you, what you have to remember is that we have legal requirements on top of all of, on top of all these things that we're doing, so that pushes all, everything out, um, by by a long time. So for something to get on the calendar, we, it might be forty-five days in advance that we have to send it to the newspaper or, and they have to post a sign a certain number of days in advance. And so when we're putting these timelines in place, um, you're, we're adding a lot of time on to how long it takes to get a case through the calendar. So it it might, forty-five days is forty-five days, but in reality, for the developer, that might be ninety days or a hundred and twenty days. Uh, and so when they call us and say, hey, hey, how long is it going to take us to to get this rezoning, it, you know? And I say, well, it's probably going to take seven to eight months, they're going to say, all right, well, we, never mind. Um, and 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 maybe that's okay, maybe that's, you know, that's, if if that's what our community wants, then that's what our community wants, but I just want us to be cognizant of that.
I just want to just say one thing, because I think you, you deserve enough credit for something. You've been able to, you've got some retention here. I've been here for about five years now, and South Fulton is running a, staff-wise, we were running a temp agency. In other words, every thirty days, we had new staff, every time we came in here, it was like, you know, somebody new. So that would also add to why things were going on. So you've been able to, I know these people now. I recognize them. So that may be, so I think we can really think through some of this. I I I certainly, uh, hear Commissioner of District One and value your opinion, so if that's the case and what you're saying, I don't want to argue, be argumental about it. We're just a recommending board, you know? I'm a preacher, I recommend to someone, don't marry somebody, they come back and, until they got a divorce, and I say, well, I told you. So I I just, I think we should look at that, okay?
I understand.
And congratulations on keeping some folks around.
How, oh, sorry, my mic is like particularly loud and it's late. Um, how, was it two weeks before? Do we lengthen the time to thirty days? Like, what has it been? Has it been thirty days the whole time?
There hasn't been a requirement at all.
Because I've often heard developers say, I mailed it out two weeks in advance. Like, I've heard at least four people say that, and then I hear people say they didn't get it. So I do think that thirty days just does widen it so that it can arrive in the mail, um, from my perspective, but, yeah.
Have a, we close the meeting.
You do have to move to recommend.
Yeah, to recommend to adopt or approve?
Approve.
Approve, okay. Um, okay, well, let's move forward and then we can adjourn. All right, I'll now entertain a motion to, um, adopt these amendments, this amendment.
And and you can also make any recommended changes as well.
Can we do that with conditions or?
Yeah, he's saying that we can.
Do we have to put a timeframe if we say with conditions of extending the thirty days, extending the, uh, you know, the the radius of 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 those who are informed and a maybe of of where the meeting should be in terms of being in the City of South Fulton or in proximity to wherever the developer is.
Yeah, honestly, I think you all can send forward any, uh, recommendation to council on this type of item that that you all, that that is warranted, um, so however you all feel.
But I mean, how how we do about that right now? So we can close the meeting.
So we have to give that right now, add what we want. So it's extending the days, then that's what it is, or if it's, uh, say in two-mile radius, we set a one mile, we say we'd like it in a two-mile radius, approval with the condition that it's within a two-mile radius, um, et cetera.
So you're not, you're you're not doing anything different than than you always do. You're just, this is just a recommendation, so you're still doing the regular, you're doing your motion, you're calling it out with your recommendation, and then it goes back to council, correct? And that's all. So there's no final approval here for this.
That's right, we just recommend.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, so let me take a shot at this, man. The Perry's smart. Uh, so I make a motion that we would, uh, approve TA twenty-five dash zero zero one with the further recommendation that, uh, that 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 meetings, resident meetings are to be held. Applicant meeting, public meetings are to be held in the City of South Fulton. Notification should be extended to two miles. And, uh, the forty-five days, I seem like that was being shot down, so. The Zoom. Oh, come on up to the top of the class.
Your website posting.
That 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 digital media, um, or Zoom is is, uh, it both is is.
Hybrid.
Hybrid, thank you. Um, and there's one more thing. And and the, uh, length of days would be extended from thirty days to forty-five days.
And it should be in the application that the Zoom is uploaded.
And it should be in the application that the Zoom is uploaded.
To to your office?
Don't make me say that again. I hope we got that. Did we get that? Can you read back that to me? Did we get it?
I think I have. You need me to?
Okay.
Want me to?
Yeah, yes, please, go ahead.
Okay, so number one, that the applicant should present within the City of South Fulton, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, number two, days extend from thirty to forty-five. Okay, number three, uh, the net of, uh, of where the applicant has to send, um, the notification should be cast to two miles, from one mile to two miles.
Yes, correct.
Okay, number four, hybrid meetings, Zoom and face-to-face.
That's it.
Okay, and the last one is Zoom should be uploaded to the staff.
Should be uploaded to the staff, right? Is there a second?
Any timeframe for that, sir? Any timeframe? We're good.
Upload or what?
Upload.
No, no.
Okay, got it, awesome.
Do we have a second? Press hard sign here, do we have a second?
Yes, do we have a second? Okay, properly moved and seconded, staff, could you please call the roll?
Mike.
Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Bailey.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Boone.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Properly moved and seconded, staff, could you please call the roll? Raise your hands.
Yeah, we're struggling.
We did it.